So, welcome to the November 19th, 2020 Planning and Zoning pre-meeting. Here in attendance, we have myself, who's the Vice Chair. Phil Markham is excused today, the Chair, so I will be acting as Chair today. We have Travis Nay from the Commission, Sue Wilson, Ned Hacker, Lisa Milkovich, and Maren Patterson. And then, are we missing anyone else?
Hey Sue, you might be excited to hear my husband called this the pre-game. He's like, "Don't you have to go to your pre-game?"
The pre-game huddle. Yep, you're right. This is the pre-game. We need to have a virtual sign that says, "Plan like a champion today." So, we also have Jared Hall and Zachary Smallwood from the staff. So, it looks like we have nine items on the agenda today. And so, has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes?
Yep.
The only thing I saw, and it's just because I'm sensitive to it, they did spell my name with two Ts on the first page.
Sorry about that.
Right, everywhere else it's one. It's just, it's alright. So, that's it. But everything else looks pretty good. Did anyone else see anything?
I had one small, little clerical suggestion that I asked Jared on. He said he'd take care of it.
No problem.
Jared, I don't know if I told you where it was. It's page three in the middle of the page.
Yeah, page three, middle of the page. I'll take care of it.
Alright.
Okay. And then, there are no, or anyone have any conflicts of interest?
No, sir.
Nope, me neither. And there aren't any findings of fact today? So, I guess we'll just jump into four and five, which looks like it'll be, Jared, are you doing those?
Yes, I am.
Jared, the concern I stated on this item, you are correct. It's taken care of in condition number four. Sorry about that.
Oh, good. Okay. I wasn't sure if that was going to be the case or not, so I'm glad to know. Okay. Let's see. So, these are, these are two items in conjunction with each other. You'll probably remember this property. It was just earlier in the year that we looked at a conditional use for a bed and breakfast at 296. I've reviewed them both in the Planning Commission's packet and reporting together because they really do kind of impact each other. So, you're doing two different reviews tonight, but all the presentation will deal with them together as well. New buildings, new construction in the CD Zone requires the Planning Commission's approval, and this is a significant demolition. Basically, the back half of the house at 296 East in Atwood, or 45th South, right in the corner of Atwood and 45th. Whole back half will be demolished and rebuilt, and the front will be refaced and refinished to match it. And then, not very many remodeling, there's not much remodeling on the building at 284 that has previously been hidden treasures. That was the thrift shop. What their plan is now in succinct form is to take 296, remodel it to use it for the retail and other parts of the business for the stuff that Sacred Energy does, and then use 284 East, the existing home there, as the bed and breakfast. We have four rooms available for guests, and then Janet, and she'll live in the house and run the bed and breakfast from there, and they'll run it partly in conjunction with the business across the parking lot. Eventually, they'll combine the two properties and use it all as one site. So, we've kind of reviewed them together, even though there is that conditional use permit component. It does look like it has enough parking. Lisa asked about that earlier. We wanted to make sure they install that parking and stripe it. It's a really good, there's a couple of really good things happening. The things that are happening that we are excited about are twofold. It's a big reinvestment in the properties, and that's nice to see in any, in any case. And then, it's also, it gets us some public improvements that have been missing on Atwood Boulevard for a long time. We get to put in that sidewalk along Atwood Boulevard going out to 4500 South. So, that's, that's important for us, too. I'll mention it in the, in the public hearing part of it as well, but we did get a couple of comments and concerns from some neighbors. They weren't emailed in. They weren't emailed in, and they haven't signed up to speak, but the Casimacuses that live to the south on Atwood called, and, and they had some, some good thoughts about it, the sidewalk, et cetera, and the remodeling, the investment in the property. They're excited about that, but they are concerned about the access onto Atwood. That bothers them. They think it would be better if there were no access from the business properties out onto Atwood Boulevard because of people going south on Atwood and then into the neighborhoods to turn around or whatever to get back up to 4500 South. That concern was expressed by the Casimacuses on Atwood Boulevard, and also James Casimakis on 4500 South to the west of the subject properties. He had the same kinds of concerns, and also about landscaping. He wanted to make sure that we talked about putting trees in the buffer against the residential properties. They're all commercially zoned, or, or office zoned, but they're used residentially, and so, we'd like to see buffers that aren't, that are sensitive to that, although they're not maybe as wide as some are required when it's against residential zone. And then, we did get a third phone call expressing that same concern, traffic going out onto Atwood Boulevard from the bed and breakfast and things like that. They were concerned about. So, that's one of the things you want to be aware of as we, as we talk about it tonight. Any questions from the Commission about that project?
Jared, I'm just wondering, you said staff finds it unlikely that the traffic from the site would exit onto Atwood and then proceed south. Why? Why is it unlikely? Sounds like it's possible.
It's possible. Anything's possible, but the, the main draw for traffic is going to be 4500 South.
Right.
So, most people would exit onto 4500 South either from Atwood or from the site directly. And since the site has two exits onto 4500 South directly, I don't see a lot of use for people that want to get where they're going quickly from going all the way down Atwood to Vine Street, for example, or 4800 South. Trey and I were concerned when the, the first version of this came in, and the coffee shop was not just a, a small coffee shop to serve kind of the business there. It was a coffee shop with a drive-through, trying to generate more business and more traffic. And we, we sent that back saying, "We're, we're not going to want to see a, an outlet from a coffee shop drive-through window." That, the drive-through window would send you right out onto Atwood, and that concerned us. With that, drive-through window gone, we're not worried about it, as staff, anyway. It'll generate some numbers, absolutely. We don't think that they'll be in the, in the realm of being a problem, though.
But it's not something that there's, you know, that anyone needs a traffic study or anything. I just, I think it's important to point out, you know, that, I mean, why?
Yeah.
We just, they can exit onto Atwood. We just don't anticipate them going south on Atwood at a high volume.
Not at any significant volume, that's right.
No, they're going to go south on Atwood because it's hard to make a left-hand turn onto 45th from Atwood.
Right.
And you know, you can go south on Atwood and come out on the State Street. You get a, a stoplight there, and not a problem. So, I can see some traffic, but I don't think that's a big traffic generator. So...
No, that's true.
Yeah, I have one question, Jared. So, they're going to, they're going to widen the driveway like by twice, I think, to 25 feet?
On Atwood?
No, I think this was the one for the corner property onto 45th, and I'm wondering if, is that going to be a bigger issue for UDOT?
It's a UDOT. It's a UDOT permit. And I don't, I don't, I don't know. We don't know.
Again, it's not a big generator, but again, making left-hand turns across three, three lanes is, can be a real tough move.
Yeah, I think you're right, Ned. 4500 is a difficult street, and that's what you get onto in any direction, and that's what the Casimacuses and Linda Fit, who had sent the other comment in, or phoned in the other comment, mentioned and said, "4500 is difficult enough that we do think there'll be traffic onto Atwood." And you're right, not a big change.
But it won't be a lot.
It shouldn't be. It's not a high generator business. We're not, we didn't, it didn't rise, like Scott mentioned, it didn't rise to the level of needing a traffic impact study done as a business. We're happy to see the reinvestment in it, and we think that the, we think that the impact from the business onto Atwood will be very minimal. So...
Agreed.
What's the, what's the reason? Yeah, what's the reason behind the different set of conditions between the two motions?
There's just one or two, they're, they're almost identical. There are one or two little things that are different for the bed and breakfast. Bed and breakfast needs to meet state code requirements about bed and breakfasts for service and kitchens and things like that. So, they're just very slight differences. I mean, it's like one or two things.
Jared, kind of along those lines, so I noticed that there is a kitchen in the bed and breakfast, but it also said they'll be going to the other building.
So, that was my question, too, Maren.
The guests of the, so I talked to Janet. Yeah, and, and she can probably speak to that, but I did talk to her about that. The kitchen in the, the kitchen in this, in the Hidden Treasures building is not very big and not very convenient to use. And they'll, they'll have to make modifications to it for state codes and things, but they'll make those. But they anticipate lots of the guests, probably all of the guests, if I'm being honest, and Janet could speak to this better than me, but lots, if not all of the guests of the bed and breakfast will be people that are coming to specifically attend her energy work classes at the Sacred Energy Building across the parking lot there. So, they'll be taking their meals and things, a lot of their meals, anyway, over at the other building because they'll be spending a lot of their day at the other building. That's the thinking behind the business.
Like, why this building? Because if you already have a bed and breakfast, like, it's hard for me to call this a bed and breakfast when it's basically just beds and then breakfast in the other, you know, it just, I don't...
Yeah, no, I see what you're saying.
More like dorms.
Yeah, it's just rooms, and then you go to the other building. Like, how do we classify this as a bed and breakfast when it's not really, I don't know.
I think just because technically it's still a bed and breakfast. They've got the ability to cook there. You can take a breakfast there.
Where's the kitchen?
It's on the first floor by the front entrance, by the front part of the building, by the bathroom on the first floor. It's hard to tell from those floor plans. They're not very good.
Yeah, I don't see a kitchen on mine.
Yep, and that's why I talked to Janet about it. There is a kitchen there. It's not very big.
And Jared, I don't mind, I don't mean to cut in, but also, if it weren't a bed and breakfast, this is in the CD Zone and would allow for transient
Rooms.
Transient rooms, anyway. Is that correct? That's...
Yeah, it is. The, the difference between a bed and breakfast and a little hotel or dorms or something like that is the way that the state, the way that the Health Department looks at how they prepare the food and things, and how stringently they look at the different fire exits and things like that. So, yeah, I don't know. But it's a good question, Maren. It's one that I asked her the other day.
And do we have designated?
On this, on this stuff right here, there, like, I went through all this, and I didn't see, you know...
It's on the, it's on the first floor by the restroom on the first floor. She'll have to, she could maybe point it out better for us.
And I don't see a designated master bedroom. Owners...
I don't know which one is hers, but she's living in, she's committed to live in the building.
But don't we need to have that designated?
I don't, I don't know. I've not processed a lot of bed and breakfast.
If we're going to require that in the conditions, it seems like we should have a designated owners area.
Along that same line, I thought, I have a common degree with that, then a question, but along that same line, I thought, I was, I can't, I think it's the drawing that's a problem, but um, where are the restrooms? It appears to me as if there could be restrooms in every room, but maybe not.
I don't think there are restrooms in every room, no.
But I don't think that's required. I think...
No, it's not.
For the sake of, of time, these are all really, really good questions that I think that we should ask the applicant.
Can I ask one, can I ask one question, though, Scott, real quick?
Yeah.
I think, Jared, and then I don't need to ask it again. On the floor plan for the Sacred Energy new building, the back end, the front end is a coffee shop, the back end's Energy Works. It looks like it has a main entrance off Atwood, yeah?
Yeah, it's kind of, it's kind of the, it's kind of reversed. The front entrance is really actually off of 4500 South.
Okay, but if you look at the drawing, it says entrance on the back end. I'm just a little concerned that that will promote people parking on Atwood and going in for energy treatments. So, that looks like it's the front of the building for the energy treatments.
I mean, the parking spots are, are where they are, so that's where people are going to park.
Hopefully.
There's going to be, there's lots of parking all around the building, on, actually on the south and the west sides of the building.
Yeah.
The principal entrance into the retail part of the building is from Atwood, but it's all really connected. And like I say, lots of these clients are, it's not like, it's not, I'm not a big energy worker consumer myself, but as I understand it, as an industry, it's not a lot of walk-in folks. It's people who have a relationship with them who've developed that over time, and they know what the different things are. If there weren't 33 parking spots on this, on this side, I would worry about people parking on Atwood.
Well, can I, can I just ask a quick question? Because usually, people are lazy. You pull up, you park, you go in. If, if that becomes an issue later on, how is that addressed? Are they, or the city, or somebody put up signs here and saying, "No parking," or red line or something?
If it became a parking issue, we could deal with that. We've, we've done that in several other instances on Atwood Boulevard because of the offices, not, not this kind of use, but the big office building.
I mean, the parking seems to be sufficient, so I, I think that's fine to, to express that concern, and it sounds like we're going to have a healthy discussion with the applicant about some of these restrooms and other things. But I think it's important also that, you know, I mean, unless the ordinance states that there has to be, you know, a one-to-one restaurant, or a restroom per bedroom, then I think it's not that important to discuss. You know, obviously, the kitchen and some of those things we can, but...
Sure.
Anyway, but I think there's some good discussion to ask Janet. So, item number six, this is Zach. So, just a quick reminder again on, on four and five, is it will be the two separate motions?
Yes.
We'll, we'll need to do those separately. Anything else, Jared, on those?
No, that's the most important part.
Yep. So, okay, so item number six. Zach?
Yeah, so I'll just go through this really quickly. We have just a little less than 15 minutes. So, it's at 5979 South Fashion Boulevard. It was an old medical office. They are proposing to remove some of the parking. Sorry, let me back up just a smidge. They're proposing to do a daycare and preschool at this location. And as part of that, I think, I believe state requirement is that there is outdoor space for them. I can't quote that specifically, but I think I remember that in another application, that it's a state requirement. And as a part of that, they're converting some of those parking spaces that would be in excess of, of the required to, to convert some of that into that outdoor play space area. It's going to require some interior demolition. The, the main structure of the building is going to stay, just removing walls to create more classroom space instead of, you know, patient space. Other than that, the, the drop-offs are going to be happening on the south side of the building. That's where the main entrance is. That's where the large majority of the parking is located. The parking area toward the, to the north is going to be used exclusively for employee parking only. It's actually specifically spelled out that that's going to be how many spaces they need for parking for employees. It's exactly how many spaces that has. So, that's that. Questions? I seen that now moving. Sorry, go ahead.
No comments from neighbors?
We did get an email today, and I will read that into the record at, at that time.
Yeah, I mean, it looks pretty safe, straightforward. Looks like it's a good use of the property.
Is this going to have a drive-through drop-off?
No.
So, it's a pull-in-and-park type thing?
Yep.
Okay. All right. I'm wondering about the, I think this person is a really smart business person to put a daycare right by Tosh.
Yeah.
There's going to be a lot of happy healthcare workers.
Yep. Yep, it's a, it's a good use. So...
I agree.
Well, Zach, well done getting through that. Number seven is the Bonneview, and I want to speak in an Irish accent every time I say Bonneview Partners, so, but I won't. But I can if you want, so...
Please do. That'd be great. That's entertaining.
Yeah, that, for the record, that would be, that would be lovely. So, so this is, this is Zach again.
Yes.
One, another of those applicants.
Yes, so the applicant has originally put out, you guys had approved a plan for, I believe, 285 units. They are coming back, want to have the potential to redesign the building and add to 350, not, not adds, an additional, sorry, adds to a total of 350 units. They redesigned the building a little bit. They're also breaking it up into two phases. And largely, that's mostly it. The parking is, is potentially going to go up a little bit as well. They're going to get additional parking stalls out of this new, this new layout as well. So, it's pretty, just, it's just an amendment, so it really, there's not much that had changed except for, that, that affects the site, I should say. The building changed a little bit, but largely, the site has remained, remained the same on that one.
Zach, are all these six conditions, are they, are they unique to this, or they, I don't remember, are they part of the original application?
Most of them were the same at the, the original application as well.
Okay. Any questions for Zach on this one?
I just have one comment. On condition number one, and number F, as in Frank, there's a typo on Commerce Drive, and it's also on page six, but I just wonder if that needs to be...
Yes, Commerce Dive, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, is, is it indicative of the area, or is it a thorough, you know, a path? So...
Yeah, I don't know if that's commentary or descriptive.
Yes, I don't know. Total commentary.
But that's why we're, that's why we're trying to do better, is so it's not a dive anymore.
Exactly. So...
They have to earn that R.
They do. They get it. Okay.
Lisa, did you have a comment? I saw you waving your hands. Okay.
Okay.
Oh, she was just doing her best pirate. Okay, awesome.
That's why I'm all the water undergrad pirates.
You would be welcome to talk like a pirate on this one if you want. So, okay, all right. The next one is Zach again. The sew-and-fit.
Yeah, so this is just a zone map amendment. It's not a general plan, doesn't have the general plan because the general plan calls for this to go to commercial. Right now, it is GO, which is our general office zone. A tailor has come forward and wants to open a tailoring business, and in, instead of taking the long-way route, having it be a text amendment to add tailoring to the GO zone, I said, "Why don't we just rezone this?" It's supported by the general plan, everything like that. It'd be a lot easier to do just the rezone. So, he's come forward with a rezone application to move this from GO to CD. And like I said, it's supported by the future land use map as, as converting over. Sacred Energy actually, on the far end, had started this, started kind of moving this needle over from the GO to the CD Zone. So, again, pretty straightforward application on this one. Questions, comments, commentary?
Will we see this again for like a CUP or anything?
I don't think so. I think it is a permitted use.
Okay, so once we approve this zone change, that...
Then he's allowed to just apply for his business license and move on.
Cool.
I have a question, just, just to teach me, when someone wants, or maybe others, maybe, when someone wants to request a zone change, can anyone request that, or does it have to be the property owner, or the applicant? What's...
So, anybody can request the zone change on a property, however you, unless it's the city, you have to get the property owner's permission, or like, you have to get, you have to get them to sign on saying that it's okay that they're doing that. Sometimes the city can go and broad-based change zoning. We are allowed to.
Lisa, are you trying to get a neighbor's property zoned or something? And you're just thinking of how you can do that?
I hadn't thought of that, but now that you mention it...
I'm rezoning all of you, so congratulations.
Is, is there concern about, and the answer is probably no, but I'm just asking that, that we're basically saying, "Hey, you want this use, so let's just change the zone." I, I...
That's specifically what we're, I'll play devil's advocate specifically why we're doing it. The future land use map calls for it to change zones, and since it's called for that as a better fit for the area, then we are inclined to support that because it's then going to become more in harmony with the, the future land use map.
Basically, what we're saying is, is yes, and that's fine to do. We're fine if someone wants to do that. We'll say, "That's good," as long as it's in, in harmony with the future land use.
Exactly. I mean, so if, say, like, somebody was like, "I want to open a tailoring business," you know, a commercial tailoring business outside of, you know, next door to your house, and I'm going to change the zone for that, well, we wouldn't support it. We probably wouldn't even entertain an application. But it just so happens that this is supported by that. So, that's why we're entertaining it.
Cool. Any other questions on this one for Zach?
I have, I have a question. So, the property behind, I think those are apartments back there, behind to the south, there's a, there's a, I don't know if, is, is it a shared drive from 45th South on the west side of this property?
It is.
Have any kind of conflicts with the front property at all?
It doesn't have anything, it wouldn't have anything to do with the zone change. Before you guys even, before this came to you, we initially, I don't know, almost a year ago, maybe six months, I don't know, 20, 2020's been like five years, so it could have been yesterday. But we had an application for a different type. I think it was a salon business. And so, I had gone through and done the staff report and done everything, and then she withdrew her application. So, I had an, I had done the analysis on that already, and so there is a shared access there, and it wouldn't, it, it's already recorded on the deed and on the property as a shared access easement. It wouldn't pertain to the zone change. That doesn't apply in that case. But if, for some reason, he were to come back, I believe the tailoring is, is a permitted use, so you won't see it again. But if, for some reason, there were a conditional use permit application, we would address it at that point as well, and make sure that that's still being covered there, that, that access issue.
We have two minutes, so who's going to be doing the, Zach, are you, Jared's doing the...
I'll be, I'll be, I'm, I'm sure we'll be kind of a team effort, but I'll be running through the slides to talk about the design guidelines.
Okay. I think it looks good.
Thanks.
Any questions in our 90 seconds left? Or...
I have a couple of questions about the last item, but I'll just make them when we're reviewing the slides.
Awesome. That one, that'll be snazzy. So, okay. Travis, you were quiet, but yet you look dignified as always.
Thanks.
All right.
I'm just ready to beat them up over the last one, just over and over and over again. We're going to make this long and miserable for them.
That, that would be, I'm sure, what you would like to do, so, anyway.
I'm looking forward to it.
Well, we, we will end the pre-meeting here, so, and then give you, my computer says it's 6:29, so...
I say if you guys want to take a quick minute for bathroom break or anything, I say go for it.
I just have to stretch.
Yeah, go do it.
Welcome, everyone, to the Planning and Zoning meeting for Murray City on November 19th, 2020. Commissioner Markham, the Chair Markham is out today, so I'm the Vice Chair, but will be chairing this meeting. I'm Scott Woodbury. With us on the committee, we have Lisa Milkovich, Travis Nay, Maren Patterson, Sue Wilson, and Ned Hacker. And then, from staff, we have Jared Hall, Bryant Farnsworth, Melinda Greenwood, and Zach Smallwood. We do, I will read a little, a little note before we start. As Chair of the Murray Planning Commission, I, Scott Woodbury, have determined that due to infectious disease COVID-19 novel coronavirus, holding an in-person meeting with an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those in attendance. Under these circumstances, Utah Code 52-4-2074 allows for electronic meetings to be held without an anchor location so long as the public has an opportunity to view the meeting and submit public comments. We are holding tonight's Planning Meeting, Commission Meeting via video conference, and the meeting is being livestreamed at murraycitylive.com. If you have public comments to submit or Planning Commission, please do so via email at planningcommission@murray.utah.gov, or register to make a live comment. So, with that... or register to make a live comment. So with that, um, we do have, uh, nine items on the agenda today. And so we will start with item number one, which is our approval of. You're jumping in? Yeah, you're already showing that. We're going to go to approval of meeting, of minutes first. So, all right, so has everyone had a chance to see and look at the, the, the minutes?
Yes.
Yes. And are there any changes other than the ones that were noted in the pre-meeting? Nope. Okay, I will entertain a motion for the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. Go ahead, Travis.
No, you got it, Ned.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from the Thursday, November fifth, twenty twenty planning commission meeting. Um, as presented, uh, with a few minor edits, uh, that we talked about in the pre-meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Hacker to approve the minutes from the, um, last planning meeting, forgot what day it was. Yeah, from the November fifth planning meeting and a second by Commissioner Nay. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, I guess it's unanimous, so there's no oppose. Beautiful. Any conflicts of interest for any of the items today?
No.
Nope? Good. It's a good thing. All right, number three, approval findings of fact. There are no findings of fact today. So we will move on to items number four and five, which will be handled together. This is the Sacred Energy and Sacred Energy Bed and Breakfast. So we have a site plan review and a conditional use permit. And so, Mr. Jared Hall, it is your moment to shine.
I'm going to go ahead and share this screen, okay? And as Chairman Woodbury just said, it is items four and five being reviewed together right now. Site plan approvals and conditional use permits in the C D zone for these two properties that are going to be used uh, in conjunction by Sacred Energy, the business interest here and the applicant. Um, these are the two properties. You can see them on the corner here of Atwood Boulevard and forty-five hundred south. Uh, they both have existing homes on those properties. Uh, the home on the left, two eighty-four east had been, um, converted and used as the Hidden Treasures Thrift, uh, shop recently in the last year, I believe. And then, uh, the planning commission in April of this year approved a conditional use permit to allow a bed and breakfast on the property at two ninety-six east, uh, which is also Sacred Energy. They're currently operating their business across the street, across forty-five hundred south. Um, they'd like to modify this building at two ninety-six east instead to be used for their business, uh, functions for energy work and crystal sales, that kind of thing. Uh, and a coffee, coffee shop, um, and then use two eighty-four east, which they've purchased as the bed and breakfast instead. Uh, so we'll go through all those kinds of issues as we go through the, um, plans here. Uh, the zoning is C D zoning. It was zoned general office prior to this, but, um, a number of months ago, both of these properties underwent zone change applications and were approved to be changed to C D zoning as, uh, allowed by the general plan's future land use map. Um, this is a combined site plan showing both the, uh, building at two ninety-six east, uh, the corner of Atwood and forty-five hundred south, and then the Hidden Treasures building here at two eighty-four. Um, what their proposal is, is to, is to kind of use them together to pave the parking in between them. Um, widen the access on Forty-Fifth South here, that's kind of small, to be a twenty-five foot, as required by our code, access. Keep the access that already exists here. Um, on the Hidden Treasures site to allow kind of maximum circulation, maximize circulation around the buildings. And then there is currently, um, an access, uh, quite a wide access on Atwood Boulevard that they would reduce a little bit, but it just goes to garages and sheds right now. There's been no full site access for commercial entity out on the Atwood Boulevard. We'll talk about that more in just a few moments, but I did want to show you just kind of the combined site plan. The two, uh, there's not a lot of modifications being proposed to two eighty-four east where the conditional use would go for the bed and breakfast. Two ninety-six east, however, uh, we'll talk about this in a moment, the back half of that building would be demolished. Uh, the front half preserved and refaced, um, and upgraded, and then the back half replaced with a, a modern structure. Uh, to make it one whole building that's suitable for retail and, and other uses. Um, a lot of the frontage would stay the same in this area, but we do add a sidewalk on Atwood Boulevard that's been missing for a number of years. Uh, and again, this, this larger parking area, uh, that provides thirty-one parking stalls, uh, for both the properties to be used together. This is a closer in view of that, uh, the more, the part of the site that will be undergoing the most change, uh, the back half of this building that's going to be new construction that needs to be approved. Again, there's that access here from Atwood Boulevard. Um, the applicants, we had some, some concerns from neighbors about access on Atwood Boulevard, and when uh, the application first came in with a couple of different components that have now gone away. Engineering and planning were concerned about the access on Atwood Boulevard because of higher volumes of traffic. Now, those components are not part of the plan anymore, and so we've, uh, we've not opposed the access on Atwood Boulevard. It would be used a lot for deliveries. It would be very convenient for deliveries, actually. Um, because it might be easier for delivery trucks to use the corner of Forty-Fifth and Atwood to get into the site, and then they can exit back out onto Forty-Fifth that way. Um, so these two spaces here are for delivery parking, so you do have some deliveries that'll be coming into the business, food and, and retail and things like that. Um, it provides a good circulation between the two accesses on Forty-Fifth and the access on Atwood, uh, for those thirty-three parking stalls. There is a plan for a dumpster enclosure here, uh, on the property. Um, we'll talk about that momentarily too, when we talk about some buffering and landscaping. Um, I want to go back to the zoning slide just for a moment to talk about that landscaping and buffering. Um, you'll notice that the properties around it are zoned in the, they're in the G O zone as well. Um, they are in the G O, the general office zone, a non-residential zone, but they are used residentially. Um, so there's no formal requirement for a buffer, uh, that we normally have between commercial uses and residential uses because it's between residential zones and commercial zones that we require that buffer. However, um, on the site, you'll notice there are these, um, areas of landscaping where parking lots, uh, but residential, or above property lines, we require five feet of, of landscaping. There's more than that here, so it could accommodate trees. We've asked in the, in the conditions of approval that the planning commission request that the landscaping, uh, include trees for buffering the adjacent residential uses. Um, and then again, around this garbage, uh, detritus, see kind of a, a a cluster of trees to help block that and, and, and buffer that as well. There's a large tree in this corner existing that ought to be preserved um, on the site and that would be easy to do the way they're configuring the parking. Um, landscaping, as long as we're talking about that, otherwise, in the frontage of Forty-Fifth South and on Atwood Boulevard, there's a required ten-foot landscape buffer. That's already there. The setbacks to the building because it was an existing home are much larger than the ten feet that's required. So there'll be a large area of landscaping here, but in that frontage landscaping, we do require certain numbers of trees that have been spelled out in your, in your staff report. Um, those don't exist on Atwood and, um, and Forty-Fifth South in front of two ninety-six east right now. But in front of two eighty-four east, uh, when it went through the conditional use permit for the thrift shop, it was required to upgrade their landscaping, and I'm happy to report that those trees and shrubs were all put in, so, and they're all doing well. So that's already compliant. They can comply with the landscaping that would be required here. Or the specific kinds of landscaping that's required. And then again, just we're asking for those trees for the residential buffer, uh, of those residential uses. Just to look at the floor plans, I mentioned that this is a, a partial demolition. This is the back half of that, um, building at two ninety-six, that home at two ninety-six. That all gets removed so that it can be redone, um, in, in modern construction to meet current codes for retail and circulation and fire, et cetera. And part of the upper floor too gets removed. That's the demolition plan. Uh, this is the floor plan for the new building. You can see that front area that already exists and would remain is kind of the retail area and the entrance there. Um, the middle portion of the building is where they would do the energy work, et cetera, and then there's this seating area by the coffee shop where they have the food service and the classroom, uh, Sacred Energy's business model, I guess. If you have interest in more of the specifics of that, we put a little narrative in the, in the staff report, but, uh, Janet, the applicant, could talk more about that if you have other interest in how they operate that. There is a small patio with tables. Um, the parking requirements that we looked at in your staff report, uh, had to do with the coffee shop area. We keep calling it the coffee shop, but it's a small kitchen service area. And, uh, that seating and then the different retail areas that are provided on site. In addition to the upper floor, it has a, a large kind of open room for games and classes, and then just the office space that they have for the project. There is a lower floor sublevel, but it's for storage only. Um, these are the elevations that have been proposed. There's a lot of brick and some, uh, some stucco work with some, some of this work above the windows to kind of match the old, uh, look of the house that has been there, um, for a long time. Pitch roofs, et cetera. So it still looks very residential. It's almost like an R and B kind of a building from one of our R and B zones, although it's not the R and B zone. Um, but we, we do recommend as staff that this is, this is a good look for the, a good upgrade for the building, a, a good investment in the property. This is the Atwood Boulevard, um, frontage that you're seeing here. Um, this is the existing frontage, and you can see this is where the, the sidewalk will go that hasn't been there previously, completed out to Forty-Fifth South now. Um, wanted to go back to one slide real quickly, um, to talk about that, that bed and breakfast. There was some, um, mention of the different um, floor plans, the kitchen, the small kitchen there, and then the use of the applicant's in the pre-meeting when we were talking. The use of the applicant's kitchen service here to supplement the meals that would be provided in the bed and breakfast. That's, that's her plan. You can talk to her more about that. If you have more questions, I kind of told you what I know in the pre-meeting. She's indicated there is a small kitchen area in this existing building that's still there and serviceable. And that would be used, but they would take, they would anticipate that some of the meals would be provided over here on the other building as well. A lot of the, of the, the clients are the same clients for the bed and breakfast and the Sacred Energy retail business over here. With that, this is just a shot showing you both buildings. They are just right here. This whole area in between them will become that parking lot area. You can see some of the shrubs and trees that were planted there for, um, Hidden Treasures. Um, and this frontage here, this will need, this is where we'll need the additional landscaping materials to meet seventeen point six eight of the code. Um, so we just wanted to show you that real quickly. And we are recommending, um, approval of both of the requests, but they are, as a reminder, they are different requests, separate applications. They just are kind of intertwined. So the planning commission's actions tonight would be regarding, first, a site plan. We are recommending approval with these conditions. And second, a conditional use for the bed and breakfast on the site as well. Uh, one of the things to mention about the conditions in the bed and breakfast, and this is related to those, those rooms and, and the questions that you had in the pre-meeting. The bed and breakfast will require a review called the change of use, uh, by the building department, and Don, um, the official, will require a change of use based on that bed and breakfast, and it's the standards that it has to be reviewed by are different depending on whether the applicant lives in the building as a bed and breakfast or whether it's operated as a bed and breakfast with an absentee owner. And that's possible too. There's not a distinction in our zoning code between those two things. A bed and breakfast doesn't have to have a, a live-in owner. Um, but the requirements for that change of use permit for it becoming a, a place where people stay overnight that are not tenants, permanent tenants of the home, those standards are a little different. So we've left that, um, up to the building official in his review. It'll need to meet whatever requirements he and the state of Utah and the Salt Lake County Health Department have for guests of that bed and breakfast. That's the principal difference between the conditional use conditions. There's a, a couple of those statements. And the site plan, other than that, a lot of them are repeats because they are so intertwined. Um, any questions for staff at this point?
Any question? Um, go ahead, Lisa.
Yeah, did you, sorry.
Go ahead.
Mr. Hall, I kind of, I just wanted to kind of apologize for, in the pre-meeting, I was doing some concern about parking on Atwood. And that was because I was just looking at the floor plan and elevations, which didn't show the site plan.
Yeah.
When you brought up the site plan, I realized there was actually a parking spot and more space between Atwood and the building, so they will be parking in the parking lot. I apologize for missing that.
No, that's fine. Well, that's been our opinion as well. We think most of the parking will have, it's, it's pretty well parked as a site.
Okay, any other questions for staff? No? Okay, is the, uh, the applicant here? Mrs. Wall? There she is. Mrs. Wall, welcome. Can you hear us?
You can unmute yourself, uh, Ms. Wall, if you'd like.
Okay.
Ms. Wall, welcome to, uh, the planning meeting tonight. Um, is there anything you'd like to add in, to addition to what Jared shared?
I think Jared done wonderful. Thank you, Jared.
He, he usually does. Jared does a good job. He, he's very reliable, very trusty.
I'm going to mute myself now.
Yeah, so, um, are you, have you reviewed all the, the conditions for the, the two motions?
Yes.
And do you have any questions on those?
Nope.
No, and you, you are able to abide with those?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Um, are there any questions from the commission for the applicant? No, no, no questions at this time? Okay, well, why?
Wait, wait, one second. Sorry, I was trying to unmute. I do have a question about, um, the kitchen facilities. Um, how those are going to be provided and where they're going to be provided? It, I don't see like, and I realize they're not real detailed drawings, but I don't see a place for, like, a cooking facility.
In the bed and breakfast?
Yes.
In the bed and breakfast, it'll be in the west, southwest room.
Jared, can you go back to the, the map and then maybe the applicant can, can guide us to where that?
Yeah, show me where that is.
Which, yeah.
I apologize. I don't have the floor plans for the bed and breakfast up here, but I can get back to the main.
Okay, yeah, yeah, maybe if Mrs. Wall can just, if she could just show us where, where that would be.
Southwest corner, you're saying, Janet?
So if you go into the, up the ramp and go in the back door, and you take about five steps in and the bathroom's right there, and then if you turn and go west, the kitchen will be right there. And it's going to be a very small kitchen. It is already there, I should say.
Okay, I just, I, we didn't have anything on our plans, and if it's going to be a bed and breakfast, I just wondered how the breakfast was going to be provided.
It'll be at the coffee shop.
Door dash, Sue.
Also, wait, so, so people are going to go to, across the parking lot to the other building for breakfast?
Yes, because breakfast should be included, yes.
Okay.
Okay, and then is there cooking facilities in the other building?
Yes, there's a small kitchen.
All right, I saw the kitchen area, but I didn't see like a stove drawn in.
Yeah. There's a kitchen in Scullery.
To be, to be honest with you, I was kind of assuming, and I'm sure Ms. Wall can clarify, that the kitchen in the new build was for the bed and breakfast and the kitchen in the all the currently hidden treasures would be for the owner to cook themselves food in.
So.
But I don't think it matters.
Well, I think it does kind of matter because the recommend, the conditional use permits have been separated. And the bed and breakfast one has additional kitchen, like Salt Lake County Health Department like condition for a bed and breakfast and providing breakfast, and then the other one doesn't. And so if, if, if two services are being offered in the two separate buildings, but we're doing them as two different conditional uses, like I wonder if we need to add condition number seven of recommendation two to recommendation one as well?
That's a, that's a good question, Maren. I, I, I don't think you do. I'm going to jump in just for a second and explain why. This is a commercial, on the, you can still see my screen, right? I'm still sharing, right?
Yes.
So this, in the other building, in two ninety-six, this kitchen is a commercial kitchen. Fully, fully commercial kitchen, so it's providing service to, to anybody that came in for retail and said, I want to get a plate of eggs and a cup of coffee. It's a full-service kitchen that has to meet all the county regs and everything anyway for its business license. In the, in the bed and breakfast, the reason we have that condition about meeting county requirements and the change of use is because when they're different and lighter, actually lesser requirements, if the, if the owner of the bed and breakfast lives in the, in the bed and breakfast itself. So it's actually, it's actually a lesser requirement there. If she's, if she's serving out of the commercial kitchen, it's already kind of covered.
Okay.
Any other questions?
You know, and I don't have a problem with the people going from their, where they're sleeping to the other building for breakfast because you do that quite often, you know, when you stay in a hotel or something, so.
Sure.
And then, any other questions for the applicant? No? Okay, um, Ms. Wall, if you'd hold on for a little bit, we, we'll. Ms. Wall, if you'd hold on for a little bit, we, we're going to open it up to the public. See if there's any, any comments or discussion and then we may call you back up. So.
Okay.
So just hold on for us. So at this point, we'll open it up to the public comment portion. And I know we had had a couple that were called before about traffic.
Yep.
And Jared, if you want to address those.
Sure, I'll just, I'll run through those as well. We had three phone calls. One from Mrs. Kessimakis, who owns the home right here to the south of the property. And she, we talked for a while, so I'm going to paraphrase a lot. Her biggest concern about the site was just the potential traffic out onto Atwood Boulevard from this opening that hadn't been part of things before. That concerns her because of people coming south into the, into the neighborhoods out of the, out of the project if that occurs. That was her principal concern. I spoke also with James Kessimakis, who owns the property to the west here of the two eighty-four building. And he, his concern, and it kind of wraps up around the back here, his concern was also traffic out on Atwood Boulevard where where his family has always lived for a long time. The Kessimakas have been around for a long time on this, in this area. He worried about that. And then he worried about the dumpster and wanted to know about there being buffers there. So we, we talked about trees and I, I let him know that we were recommending additional trees in the landscaping there, although it was not a required buffer. There was some discussion about fencing. There's an existing fence. And that's going to be kept and maintained. It could be replaced in the future if, if that becomes a, a thing that they want to do. But right now, the existing fence is adequate and they're planning to keep it. He wondered about that as well and we also got a call and I got a message from the phone, call from Mrs. Linda Fit, who was also concerned mostly about traffic going out onto out onto Atwood Boulevard from the site because forty-five hundred south is so busy. And then the Kessimakas were also pleased to see the sidewalk going in. They felt like that was dangerous for years and years and years. So but aside from that, mostly just traffic out on the forty-five, out on the Atwood Boulevard, sorry.
And it does look like we did receive one email.
Okay.
So I will just, if you are ready, I can read that in.
Go ahead.
Okay, so it's from Kim Anderson. Somebody said, don't they, or this person said, don't they need an elevator? Different uses on separate floors, DK. And that was, that, that's it.
So do, do we know Zach or Jared, if there's any sort of ADA?
I don't know that there is. I don't know about an elevator requirement. That'd be part of the building permit review. Usually different uses on different floors isn't something that I'm familiar with. Is there an elevator requirement? So I can't speak to that. But our building, this will be a plan that on the part of it that you're concerned with is the parking related to these uses and the square footages that we're looking at. So in terms of an elevator, your approval of it as a, as a site plan doesn't give them any sway over the building codes. If they need an elevator under building codes, they got to put that elevator in whether you approve them for a site plan or not. So I would defer to the building department on that when they review this for the floor plan changes and the building of the building permits themselves. It's a good question. I don't know the answer to that. It's not large enough to need an elevator as a second floor, but I don't know about the different uses thing. That's new to me.
So, it sounds excellent. Okay. All right, well, I guess nothing else on the public comment, Zach or Jared?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay, well, we will close the public comment portion and doesn't sound like there's any, any things for the applicant to answer unless she would like to. Any additional comments as well?
Good.
Okay. All right, well, then we will bring it back up to the commission and for more discussion or I will entertain a motion on the first item, which is the site plan approval. Remember, there is two two motions required. So if anyone would like to make a motion or discussion.
I would, I would like to ask Jared one more clarifying question.
Go ahead.
Jared, go over again what the buffer requirements are between these now commercial buildings and the residents to the south and the west.
Yeah, the, the formal, that's a good, a good question. The formal requirement between the two properties, between these properties and the properties to the south and west are nothing because they're both commercially zoned. Our, our buffer requirements are between commercial projects and residential zones. So there's not a formal buffer requirement other than parking lots that are adjacent to property lines, whether they're commercial or not, are buffered with, they're not really buffered. We have five-foot landscaping requirements there. What we're asking for in, in the, is a buffer, even though there's not one required as a condition of the approvals to help mitigate the impacts of the, of the commercial uses because these are although there's owned general office and I'll go back one more slide, there's own general office, but this these properties are residentially used and have been residentially used for a long time by the Kessimakas. This is about as nice a residential property as you will ever find. Given that fact and the, the availability of the land for them to provide that landscaping buffer, it made natural sense to just expand it a little bit beyond the five feet that's required and get the trees in there to, to be good neighbors. And the walls have been willing to do that, so.
So because they're in the same zone, they don't need any buffering?
Right, they're both non-residential zones, so there's no real requirement.
Got it.
It's just a function of the site plan at this point. Thanks, that good, good point.
Okay.
So other than any other questions, Mr. Chairman, I could make a motion.
Sounds excellent.
So I'd, I'd make a motion that planning commission approve the proposed modifications to the building and properties located at two eighty-four and two ninety-six east forty-five hundred south, subject to conditions one through nine as presented.
Mr. Chair, can I second that motion?
You can. I have a motion by Commissioner Hacker to approve the proposed modifications to the building and the properties located at two eighty-four and two ninety-six east, forty-five hundred south, subject to conditions and conditions one through nine and a second by Ms. Milkavich. All right, Jared or whoever's calling.
I'll, we'll call our own tonight, I guess. Cool, Zach? Okay. Mr. Hacker?
Yes.
Ms. Milkavich?
Yes.
Ms. Patterson?
Yeah.
Mr. Nay?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
And Mr. Woodbury?
Yes.
Thank you all.
All right, so the first one passes. So we have a second recommendation for the conditional use permit. So if there's any discussion on that, certainly we can have that. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make another motion, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that the planning commission grant conditional use permit approval to allow the operations of a bed and breakfast on the property addressed two eighty-four east, forty-five hundred south, subject to conditions one through ten as presented.
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Hacker to approve the conditional use permit to allow for an operation of a bed and breakfast on the property addressed two eighty-four east, forty-five hundred south, subject to conditions one through ten and a second by Commissioner Wilson.
Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Milkavich?
Yes.
Ms. Patterson?
Yes, sorry.
Mr. Nay?
Yes.
And Mr. Woodbury?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Okay, Ms. Wall, congratulations. Thank you for coming back and seeing us a lot. Don't be a stranger. Let's see if, again, to do more business with us. It's great. So we love to have you in. But congratulations and best of luck in your business moving forward. So all right, the next item is item number six, which is the Creative Learning Academy, and this will be Zach.
Zach, do you want me to stop sharing so you can share?
Yes, please.
All right, you're on.
You guys are both good at sharing.
We are. We're, 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 we're real good sharers. So. All right, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. All right, so this is item number six, Creative Learning Academy. It's a conditional use permit for childcare business at fifty-nine seventy-nine South Fashion Boulevard. And I'm not on the right thing. Here we go. Okay, it's located here along Fashion Boulevard and Bellevue Avenue. If you'll remember, last year approximately, you rezoned this, this property to professional office. The mall is just a little bit further south of this property. It was a medical office before this. And so the applicant is requesting to open a preschool and childcare service. It is in the GEO zone. Sorry, I'm losing my mind today. I apologize. And can, those are allowed in, subject to a conditional use permit application. So as you can see, the existing on your left, the proposed, or yes, this is the existing on both, the existing basement layout, the existing main level layout. And then the proposal for the main lev- level layout on your right and the proposed basement layout on your left. So as you can see, they are removing some of the patient and doctor's office rooms to facilitate more classroom space. You can see here that this is the existing site layout. There are twelve parking stalls up here with Bellevue access. There are also additional parking stalls on this side that are on the south side that are accessed from Fashion Boulevard that accesses the main entrance to the building. This is a rear yard access that you really can't, if you drive by it and look at it or even stop and look at it, you can tell this is not a main entrance. So their proposal is to remove some of those parking stalls and put in a playground area with kind of a bike path and play areas, things like that. And they will still be able to meet all their parking requirements. Yeah, that's outlined, outlined in the staff report. Staff doesn't see any potential problems with that. Some of the photos of the, of the site for you. This is that south side. It's clearly marked as the, the main entrance of the building. This on your right-hand side is the proposed for the sorry, for the playground space. This on your left hand here is right there on Fashion Boulevard. Here, I want to specifically call out the dumpster that is not enclosed. We are recommending that the applicant work with us to, to obtain a building permit so that she can get that enclosed and meet the requirements of the ordinance. So with that, we are recommending approval of, of the childcare and preschool business subject to the five conditions outlined in your staff report. Any questions I can answer at this time?
Go ahead, Lisa.
My only thought on this project, it looks like a good project and good use of the area, but my thought was hoping that the staff will in currently or in the future have their own discussions with the applicant about how to rezone the house separate from the building. My concern mostly was about the masonry fence. You know, she puts a masonry fence up now that she rezones it and the masonry fence might be in the wrong area and things she needs to think through in the process.
Yep, and I have actually had the discussions with, with the applicant and I, I kind of had mentioned, I don't know if I put it in the staff report or not, but I had a discussion with her saying it might be in her best interest to, to potentially carve off that existing single-family home off of that. Her process because she would have to carve it off and then she would have to rezone it. It, it's a long, arduous process and that's she is open to that from, from our discussions. It's, it will just take some time after, after, and I think it's probably more appropriate for her to do after she's kind of getting her business started and things like that.
Yeah, it was just, you know, just a courtesy thought to make sure she's making best decisions now for later. But not at times. I don't think it's today's application, just. Thank you.
So I have a question. So does this application prevent her from keeping that a single-family residence?
No, it is a non-conforming use, so is, it is allowed to continue. It's being used as a single-family home right now. It's being rented out to the property owner's son, I believe. And she intends to keep renting it to him at least for, I believe, his, his lease is up in March or something. I'll have her speak to it. But then afterward, she intends to use it for her own friends and family that might be visiting.
Zach, just a question. I thought that when something was a non-conforming use, that if there was a, an owner change or an, you know, an applicant like this that we, the goal is to try to bring things into, you know, to conform. Is that not what we try to do when we have changes?
Yeah. This one's complicated because technically this is not an application for that portion of the property, if that makes sense. It's for a conditional use to be used in the building that is conforming. We're not doing or touching or saying anything with the existing non-conformity.
But it's all the same site plan. It's all the same site. Right? And, and traditionally, when we, I mean, I'm just thinking about you know, Garko and some of those places, when, when you have one applicant come in, you kind of look at a lot of different things. They, oh, we've got to now do this dumpster or landscaping when sometimes, I mean, think of the dry cleaning we did a couple of weeks ago. That was one little portion. But yet we were looking for the whole site. So I just want to make sure that we're consistent on it. And that's, that was, I guess, my question is, I mean, I'm all for helping the residents and businesses and you know, trying to do the best thing for the city, but I want to make sure that it's not arbitrary, that we have a, a good reason why we're not bringing that into conform if, under the circumstances.
Right, and, and it would still, so it's not, let me try and kind of work, work through this. It's, it's not non-conforming to a site problem. There's not a site problem that's happening there. It's a use. It's a non-conforming use that's being done, not a non-complying structure. So it, that's where the the difference is because it, that building is still allowed to maintain a non-conforming use. Where this other building that's on the same property is requesting a conditional use.
Okay, that, that's fine. Any other questions for, for Zach on this? Okay. Zach, anything else you need, want on this?
Uh, nope. I can bring in the applicant if you'd like.
That would be great.
Perfect.
Good evening, Mrs. Lloyd, how are you?
I'm great, how are you?
Good, is, we're doing excellent. We, you know, wonderful. So is there anything that you'd like to add to Zach's presentation?
I would just go in alignment with what he was saying, you know, ultimately, you know, I'm, I'm very open to having the, like, the rezone that he talked about in having, you know, a residential space and a commercial space. So yeah, that's something on my radar for sure.
Okay, well, and Zach and Jared and the whole staff are very detail-oriented and they'll, they'll help you know, to make sure that you can accomplish that. And so I just continue to encourage you to continue to work with them on those. So have you had a chance to review the conditions?
Yes.
And do you have any questions on those?
I do not.
And are you willing to abide by those?
I am.
Good, well, thank you. We're going to open up for public comment and then we may, if we have additional questions, we may come back to you. So thank you for being here and, and just hold on for us for a bit.
Not a problem.
Okay, so at this point, we'll open it up to public comment and looking at Zach's email there, could you see any? So Zach, I'm just glad you weren't showing us your Instagram account. I mean, you know. But did we have any public comments or anything?
I believe Jared has one to read.
I have, I do have an email that Zach received earlier that he asked me to read in, so I will do that now if that's okay. This is from Denise Knight. Says, we would like to express our concerns with the Creative Learning Academy. Cars dropping kids off and on and off from Bellevue Avenue. Noise from kids outside playing during weekdays. This is a neighborhood. We deserve our quietness. Not noise from a business. Excess traffic on Fashion Lace Boulevard, excess traffic on Bellevue Avenue. You know, parents will cut through Bellevue Avenue to gain access to the school because it outlets onto fifty-nine hundred south. These are our concerns of this matter. If half of parking, of the parking lot becomes a playground, there is no way they would have enough parking drop-off space to have school there. They should look for another location, the heart- uh, drop off space to have school there. They should look for another location. The Heart Lung Institute could barely accommodate their own customers. Thank you. The Knights, 356 East Bellevue Avenue.
Okay. Anything else?
Nothing coming in.
Okay. All right, and no one's registered or anything for this. To make a comment, I'll be on that.
No.
Okay. Well, do we want, do we like to wait a little bit or do you wanna? I mean, I guess people have to register, so.
If if you'd like, I could kind of speak to to the email.
Why don't you speak to the email before we, and and we'll see if anything else comes in. That would be super.
Perfect. So um, you'll have to forgive me because now I don't remember exactly all the email, but I remember some.
Most of it, so parking lot turned into a um, date like field for kids outside, traffic on Bellevue, drop off, traffic on Fashion Boulevard, a lot of traffic concerns, also um, noise, um, residential neighborhood feel. Um, I think that's the gist of it.
Yes, so um, I remember that the the parking on uh, Bellevue, I do, like I had stated in kind of the presentation, there will not be any kid drop off access from Bellevue Avenue. It's all coming from Fashion Boulevard. I can go back to the 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 site plan here. Uh, so the, all the access will be through here. So they actually have to enter from Fashion and exit from Fashion. Um, all this will be employee parking, so that I anticipate that they will come in in the morning, park, stay there, and um, then leave during, at the end of the day. Um, Bellevue, I will say, is a public street and people can um, access that to take their children to school. Um, just like anybody else would be able to do that as well. Um, so there there is the potential for that, but I don't think that's going to be um, a a traffic concern for this specific use. Um, with the playground area, um, I I would anticipate that they will be installing a, a, well, there is already a masonry wall there. Um, I will point out one thing I did notice on my site visit, which if you can see right here, there's a little gap um, that will need to be closed up because we don't want children running into people's backyards. And I don't think they want to lose track of children. So um, there might need to be some adjustment there, but that's something that she can be working with us. Um, I know that's going to be a concern that she takes care of at that point. Um, and as I had mentioned, a lot of the traffic that will come from this is largely going to be happening at two times, um, typically in the morning when they're dropping kids off and in the evening when they're picking the kids up. I don't anticipate this. Um, and it will be staggered, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Lloyd, I believe it was from seven to nine in the morning or something like that. And then um, five to 5:30 is typically pickup. Um, so I I don't anticipate that there's going to be. Um, I I believe that the parking that's being provided will be sufficient in that, so.
So Zach, is the, is the drop off, the intent, there's not like a designated like turnaround zone, it'll, people will pull into a spot, drop off their kid, so that's what.
That is correct. And um, I just thought of this. In her, in her narrative, Ms. Lloyd actually mentions that they actually bring the child out to the car, I believe. Um, they actually, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Lloyd, um, but if they, I believe that they they bring the child out to to the car. They actually don't go in to pick them up. So um, that leaves, it leaves, I believe it was like three minutes for a pickup, pickup, drop off time.
Yeah, that's what it says in her narrative.
Yeah.
Okay. And any um, any other questions on on that or Jared or Zach, anything else has come in? Okay, but I think we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of this one. And uh, we'll bring it back to the commission for any questions to the applicant or any discussion items, or if anyone feels so inclined to make a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a mo-
Wait, what was that? Travis? Or Maren? Okay, Maren, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit to allow the operation of a childcare and preschool business on the property address 5979 South Fashion Boulevard, subject to the five conditions.
Mr. Chair, can I second that motion?
You can. I have a motion by Commissioner Patterson to approve a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a childcare preschool business on the property address 5979 South Fashion Boulevard, subject to conditions one through five, and a second by Commissioner Milkevich. All right, Zach?
Yes, so Commissioner Patterson? Sorry, it didn't register.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Milkevich?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Nay?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, um, and I think.
Yes, Zach.
I was just making sure I wasn't, I knew you were next. I just wanted to make sure because it didn't feel like six.
No, you're good. You're thorough as well. I appreciate it.
Yeah, definitely.
And I have, I have voted yes as well. I see, I told you I missed somebody and Scott, you jumped the gun.
Oh, well, you were just gonna, were you just gonna dramatic pause? Sorry about that.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Hacker.
Yeah. Ned just sits there and just smiles and just says, oh, all this procedural stuff. All right, well, uh, Ms. Lloyd, thank you for um, the passage unanimously and thank you for choosing to do business in in Murray. I encourage you to continue to work with the staff um, for any future um, you know, land use or things. Um, they'll, they'll, they do a great job and they'll help you out on that. So thank you so much and best of luck with your business.
Thank you.
Okay, Zach, I apologize for jumping the gun there. I, I, my, the problem is my shoes were on and so I couldn't, I had trouble getting past five, so I, I was, I was struggling, so, um, all right. All right, number, number seven is um, the Bonneview Apartments, and this will be Zach as well.
Yep, so this is a request uh, from Dan and Eric Bishop uh, to amend their conditional use permit uh, for a mixed use development at the Bonneview Apartments at those addresses on your screen. That's a lot of addresses to read, so I'm not gonna read them. So with that, it is in the MU zone, which is our mixed use zone. It encompasses those five properties. And so I've shown the approved plan on the left, which is what you guys approved in February, excuse me, in April um, of this year, kinda shows more of an E shape, a backwards E shape. Um, and the proposed amendment is much more kind of a mass of, uh, it's kind of blocky. This is kind of showing more of the parking arrangement. This is the proposed site plan. Uh, they are requesting to go from 285 units to 350, uh, so that is an increase. Um, I don't even know why I began, began that sentence because I don't know what the difference is, so. Forty, wait, 65 units. There we go. I could do math in my head. Look at me. Um, I'm like Jared. I like colors and shapes. I don't like numbers. All right, so they are proposing to shift this into two phases. So this is the south side, so phase one would be the south side with 200 units and a portion of the commercial. And then uh, phase two would be the northern half with 150 units and the remainder of the commercial. Excuse me. And this is the uh, approved, again, kinda showing you the uh, more illustrative site, site plan. This is the proposed. It's more kind of almost a figure eight. Um, sorry, hold on one second, I'm getting. So with that, that's largely, that's largely the changes. This is, again, just an amendment to the to their current conditional use permit application. It is, they are proposing to increase the parking as well. I apologize, I didn't include that in the slides here. But uh, we are recommending pretty much that you uh, approve uh, the amended site plan with the additional units and the additional parking as well. So I'm happy to take some questions, should you have them.
Any questions for Zach regarding this?
Travis has one.
Travis, fire one.
I'm just curious if the, if the conditions have changed since the last time we heard them. Has anything been added? Anything been taken away?
I do not believe anything's been taken away. Um, if anything, I believe FIRE added some additional stuff. Um, I think it's just from, oh, one thing I did want to mention, um, and I apologize, it was in your staff report, but it's not in the conditions, but it's, it, well, it is in the conditions. It's condition number three, is the applicant shall work with Murray City Water and Sewer to install a 10-inch water line. It's mentioned in the staff report that uh, they have entered in an agreement with the city to um, to work to install that. So this is, this is a project that is moving forward. So um, it is quite a bit of a cost, um, so they are working with that with the city. Um, so I wanted to make sure that you guys are aware of that. Most, so most of these, I believe, almost none of these have changed. Um, from before.
Were they, were they able to establish ownership of the road on the south end to be able to connect all the way around?
They are still working on that, I believe, um, and they can probably speak to that better than I can.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Zach, I think we may have talked about this last time we discussed this project, but there's a considerable amount of um, higher density housing through the area. Is this 65 additional units um, gonna impact the Horizon Elementary, which I think they're probably, most all of them will be attending there since the K2 school is closed. Um, has that been brought to the school district at all?
We do send notices to the, to the school district for these things, um, so they would have been alerted. But I have not heard any comments from the school district.
Okay. Well, alrighty, is the applicant here? Zach, can you let me?
Yes, sorry, sorry. I was reading a, a chat from Ms. Milkevich. I apologize. Hold on.
Well, that's cool. That's cool. We, we'll just wait. So, all right, Mr. Bishop, welcome. Thank you for joining us on this wonderful Thursday evening. And well, we have two Mr. Bishops. All right.
Yes, there's myself and then my partner, Dan.
Perfect.
So I'm Eric Bishop. Um, I do have a few things, although Jared told me to be quiet, so I'm not gonna say a lot, or at least as much as I had could otherwise, but when you're invested in a project like this and that it absorbs so much of your life, you just like to talk about it. So anyway, I guess in, in response to Travis's question, the road to the south, we are close to uh, resolving our ALTA survey. And um, prior to doing that, we've been working with the B and H Storage uh, group that owns the storage facilities to the south of our property and doing a boundary line agreement. And once we get that done, then we should be able to finish our survey. The preliminary indications from our revised new ALTA survey is that we do uh, control the road. And as you'll recall from the site plan, um, not only is our axis, primary axis going into the parking lot from uh, those areas off of Erickson, but then it also switches to a private lane or or a private section of road as it goes uh, to the very south end of the property. And so again, we feel like we've made good headway that way. Ned had talked about the higher density and the uh, potential impact on Horizon Elementary. I might just mention that a project of this um nature, we don't have any three-bedroom units, uh, very few two-bedroom. Most of our units will be studios and one-bedroom, which uh, really accommodate people that don't have kids. And so although we can't say there won't be any kids in the property, we certainly wouldn't take any movements to try and keep kids from there. We want kids around, but it shouldn't have a big uh, the schools, the school system, just by nature of the project. Our target market, by the way, is a 27 to 30-year-old female. Uh, they'll be the decision maker whether they're uh, married or single. And so a lot of what we've done and the decisions that we've made on the layout and the security to the site have been driven uh, by that target tenant that we have. So um, I know Ned, that doesn't entirely answer your question, but that's at least what we've been anticipating. Um, in addition, just other positive things that have happened since we met last, in addition to the water line agreement that Zach referred to, which we believe will significantly enhance the fire flows, not only to our property, but to surrounding properties. Uh, we've also done the boundary line agreement and and that's been very time consuming. And then we've spent quite a bit of time with uh, FFKR and other design professionals trying to refine our floor plans and uh, just the attractiveness of the site. Uh, Zach, I don't know if you can pull up the rendering, but the rendering would show you again an idea of of uh, again, we, we just think this is going to be a beautiful uh, project and uh, in this location. Um, why we're asking for an amendment, um, this location, as you know, is an area in transition and has been targeted for redevelopment. It's completely surrounded by industrial properties. And so we're kind of on the bleeding edge of uh, trying to make this a nicer, walkable area. It's not a slam dunk site, uh, but it's a good site. It has its advantages, you know, close to transit and and there is other redevelopment happening in the area. Um, during the last few months, since uh, the COVID pandemic kind of took off and sprouted its life of its own, the capital markets, both the debt and equity capital markets have become very dysfunctional. Uh, they're starting to normalize in more recent months, but uh, as we have been trying to address these capital markets, both equity and debt, it became apparent that to have the flexibility of a two-phase project um, would allow us to access capital more readily. And so although we're not throwing out the E-shaped uh, option on the left, we just want the option to be able to go to the capital markets and capital partners with uh, really both options and see what we can, can make happen. So that's really kind of our motivation is to have that additional flexibility, which should translate to a reduced lease-up risk and and help us with uh, absorption. Um, the vision that we have for the site, I know that it's, it's shown in the renderings and the site plans, and we've tried to be very thoughtful. Uh, on the most recent site plan, by the way, I'm not sure that we're gonna do uh, the pickleball courts in the middle of an enclosed court echo chamber, which is what it would turn into, but we wanted to try and demonstrate and show it to you that we are anxious to, to again, provide good amenities to our tenants uh, to attract them. This project, uh, with the two-phase project will be upwards of an $80 million investment in this area, which is significant. And I can't frankly believe I'm saying that, this much money. Uh, but anyway, it's a significant uh, investment in the area that we believe will have a, a real positive impact on the Murray Central Station as well as the downtown uh, Central District redevelopment area. My own philosophy is that by developing and and getting the transit hub in place and functioning with a lot of residential uses, uh, that it's going to spill over and benefit the downtown area. Now, that's just my opinion. But we believe again that it's going to, to be not only helpful for the central station, but also for the downtown area. That, all of that being said, I guess the whole reason I want to do this, uh, Jared, and again, I am so sorry. But the whole reason I wanted to do this, and I recognize that that uh, this planning commission body can't really help with this, but I, but it's really an appeal, I guess, for your collective creativity and help. Um, you know, in addition to the approvals tonight, uh, we really want to make a, a uh, an appeal for help with infrastructure. Uh, with the amount of money that's being invested in the site, there's currently no RDA in the area, and I know that that's not in your uh, wheelhouse. Uh, but as I've talked with both Jared and Zach in the past, even just upgrading the streetlights and the sidewalks between our property down to Vine Street will uh, significantly enhance the walkability of the property as well as create again that huge message to a 27, 30-year-old female that it's safe. Really a, a true uh, public-private partnership um, for making that appeal and and hopefully some creative thinking can go into that. and hopefully some creative thinking can go into that by collectively all of us. So I've said way too much, I am so sorry. But any questions or other concerns that either Dan or I can address?
Any questions from the staff, from the commission for the applicants?
I might make a shameless plug, I was raised in Murray, I'm a fifth-generation Murray boy, and even had a grandpa that caught tuberculosis and died because of the sampling mill. We are really, personally, I've never done a project in Murray, I've just had such a positive experience with Jared, Zach, and the other staff members. We really want to do this right, and we want to make it a good project for a lot of reasons, not only the personal connection that I have with the city, that I just loved growing up there.
Well, thank you for that, Mr. Bishop. One question for you is, have you had a chance to review the six conditions?
Yes, sir.
And are you able to abide by those?
We are, yeah, we're planning on it, have been moving forward on them so far with them, so thank you.
Thank you. Any, any questions for the applicant from the staff, any comments? The commission? Okay. Jared, I guess, and I want to make sure, you know, obviously, Mr. Bishop understands, I know both of Mr. Bishops or Bishop, Bishop, I, I don't know the plural of Bishop, you know? But I'm sure it's just bishops, but that, obviously, the planning commission can't really say, yes, city, go ahead and put some money in, you know, for, that's, that's not, that's not our, our, you know, our wheelhouse, as you, as you admitted, especially since one of the conditions talks about being able to put in the 10-inch water line. And in our report, the staff, you know, that they do talk about how, if that is not able to be accomplished, that, that, you know, there should be some denial. So I guess my question is, Zach or Jared, or even Melinda, whoever wants to take it, is, has there, there been some discussions on this? Or is this something that you just take offline for another session?
It's really something that would be offline.
Okay.
We can put, I mean, there's, there's no real nexus to our particular, to this application to get the kinds of improvements to commerce. But if we were, if the power department were, for example, looking to replace streetlights, whatever, we'd push them this direction, of course. So that's the kind of thing we can, we can do outside of establishing some other kind of RDA-type area there, and that's, that's out of our purview here.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that, I just want to make sure, you know, obviously, on the record here and understand, you know, from the applicant, to make sure that we know that we're, you know, we're listening to them, and we want to try to do everything we can. We understand the significant investment and also the benefit and the upsides to it. So and I also understand that this, this application, I mean, the condition says that the applicant shall work with the Murray City and Sewer Department. So however that is done, is stuff outside of here, we just know the project can't move forward without meeting the conditions. So, so with that, we'll go ahead and open it up to the public comment. So have we had any public comment at this point, Jared or Zach?
There's no, no new comments coming in, and none were received previously.
Okay, all right. Well, I would anticipate then that there won't be any comments because they didn't come in. And so we'll go ahead and enclose the public comment portion. And we're back up to the commission. Any questions for the applicant, any comments for staff, applicant, or anybody? No? Okay, well, then I will entertain a motion if anyone would like to do that.
Mr. Chair, may I make a motion that the planning commission approve an amendment to the approved conditional use that allows mixed-use development on the properties addressed at 4955, 4984, 4994, 5002, and 5020 South Commerce Drive, subject to conditions 1 through 6?
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion from Commissioner Nay to approve an amendment to the approved conditional use permit that allows the mixed-use development on the properties addressed 4955, 4984, 4994, 5002, and 5020 South Commerce Drive, subject to conditions 1 through 6, with a second by Commissioner Hacker. All right, now Zach, I will let you call.
Okay, Commissioner Nay?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Milkovich?
Yes.
And Commissioner Woodbury?
Yes.
There we go.
All right, Mr. Bishops, Mr.'s Bishop. Thank you so much for coming to the city, for going through the application process. It has been approved. And so we encourage you to continue to work with the city staff and Jared and Melinda and Zach, all very, very creative, competent, trustworthy professionals that can advise you on any, any other options to help with the concern that you expressed. We hope that that we'll be able to make the project work. I think it's a great project and would bring some great, great needed housing to the city. So thank you so much, and best of luck with your project.
Thanks to each of you as well, bye-bye.
Bye. Alrighty, the next one is number eight. And that is the So and Fit, and this will be Zach.
Yes, give me just one moment. There we go. Okay, thank you very much. So yes, this is a So and Fit, it's a zone map amendment from GO, General Office, to CD, Commercial Development. The property is addressed 192 East, 4500 South. As you can see, it's right here along 4500 South. This is that, I used to call it the Chinese buffet, I think it changed names, but that's what it is. It's a Chinese.
It's the Paradise Buffet now.
Yes, the Paradise Buffet, right there. So just a little bit east of that. It is currently in the GO zone, there is, you know, CD on the west of it. And then further over here, this was the Sacred Energy that you guys just, well, this, this one specifically was the, the thrift shop, that just recently changed zones from, from GO to CD. So the future land use map does call for this, and all the properties that front along 4500 South to change from this office blue color to general commercial, which includes the CD zone. So to wrap that up real quick, we are recommending that you forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the zoning map amendment from, for the property at 192 East, 4500 South, from GO to General Office to CD Commercial Development. I think that might be the fastest I've ever done a presentation, so.
I, I think it probably is, well, well done. I remember, you know, you probably don't remember Ray Black, you know? So not Ray, who was the one that retired, was it Ray, Jared? Remember? Yeah, sometimes he was very, very thorough on his presentations, and sometimes it was a very easy one. And so, you know, we had to let him go through the whole presentation, so.
That was Ray.
That was Ray, so.
Well, if you'd like, I can go back and start all over again.
No, you did a great job, I'm complimenting you, it was wonderful. It was one of the quickest in my nine years on this, it was, it was super, so well done. Any questions for Zach on that? Did you catch all the information with his lightning speed? Okay, no questions, see Zach, it was that thorough, good job. All right, is the applicant here?
Yes, and Mr. Ahar, you are now allowed to unmute yourself and speak.
Mr. Ahar, welcome to the planning commission tonight. Is there anything you'd like to add to Zach's wonderful presentation?
No, that's, hi, everyone. Good afternoon, and thank you so much for the awesome, you just did a talk, and I don't have any, anything to say more than that, just I want to change the zoning map, that's it.
Okay, well, thank you so much for, for attending tonight. We will, there may be some questions for you, so if you want to hold on a little bit, we will bring it to the commission and see if there's any, any questions from the commission for Mr. Ahar.
For sure.
Any questions?
I don't have.
Okay, all right, we will go ahead and open it up to the public comment at this point. Have we had any public comments so far, Jared or Zach? Jared's on mute.
No, we, we haven't had any new comments coming in on that.
Okay.
We, yeah.
All right. Okay, so no, no public comments? Oh, is that vibration, is that a public comment?
No, it was a, it was a public, it was a question, was a question on the, it was a question actually on the previous project about parking ratios for the project.
The Bonneville one?
For Bonneville, yes. It came in after you had closed it, but.
Sorry.
It's just a question about the parking ratios for the project. Zach, you could correct me if I'm wrong, but I, they were just about two per unit on Bonneville, although the code would allow them at 1.25, 1.15, that close to the station.
1.125, yeah. Yeah.
But they're planned for more than that.
I think 1.4, sorry, I don't mean to get off topic onto that, onto that.
That's fine, well, I appreciate you at least acknowledging that that did come in and that we, we answered it here on the record, so, so thank you for that. But if any public, I don't want to be too, too quick on this one, so. Anything? Okay. All right, well, then I will go ahead and close it, and I'm sure there'll be plenty of time. If someone else, something comes in, we can come back and address it. But we'll close the public comment portion of this, bring it back to the commission. Any, any questions for the applicant, or if someone wants to make a motion, that would be super.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for a recommendation of approval to the city council for the requested amendment to the zoning map designation of the property located at 192 East, 4500 South, from GO, General Office, to CD, Commercial Development.
Mr. Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hacker to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the requested amendment to the zoning map designation of the property located at 192 East, 4500 South, from GO, General Office, to CD, Commercial Development, and a second by Commissioner Milkovich. All right.
All right, Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Milkovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nay?
Yes.
And Chairman Woodbury?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Ahar, it passes unanimously, at least the forwarding to the city council. So the next step will be, it was the city council, right, not Samir?
Yes.
So the city council will bring it up on one of their future meetings, and you'll be notified of, I'm sure, when that meeting will be. But thank you so far for choosing to do business in Murray, and we wish you best of luck moving forward.
Okay, thank you so much, have a nice night.
You too. Okay, item number nine. Jared is really excited, lots of pretty colors, no, not a lot of numbers, lot of colors. So Jared's on mute again, so I can't, I can't hear you soliloquize. Is that a real word? So, go ahead, Jared. You're still on mute. Does Zach?
Sorry, I just need one second to get my screen up and shared, so.
Jared's muting himself, I'll just go ahead and tell everyone, I forgot to turn my video off, so I hope you all enjoyed watching me clean my whiteboard and
Beautiful.
and all of my projects, and you're welcome.
Yeah, it wasn't on the whole time. So, so, yeah, we, we didn't see, see everything, but that's all right, that's the world we live in, Melinda. You know, it's, I'm sure we've all heard stories of worse things that have happened on video conferences, so.
Very true, thank you.
And, but it's good to know that you take pride in your office, I appreciate that, that is, that's great to know, so.
Are you all seeing the slideshow again, yes?
Well, I'm seeing your, your speaker notes, you know.
That's not the one I want, Jared, hang on.
No, we can see what's coming up.
Well, yeah, you know, you're supposed to be seeing the other screen.
Well, we would like to, because it shows a little bit better, but now we can see, you don't even have any notes, you just speak off the cuff, that's amazing, Jared.
Absolutely, you, you know perfectly well, I do everything off the cuff. So while I'm, while I'm getting this working, I'm going to just go ahead and let you know that my favorite part of the week so far was when Mr. Bishop low-key recognized the universal truth that 27 to 30-year-old women, married or single, make all the decisions. And everybody just let it pass.
Well, because the reality is, is the age is not indicative of that power. I think all women make decisions, Jared, let's just be honest.
That's true, I'm stopping the share so I can fix the shares, there's this. Yeah, I'm not, okay, hang on. I need my, sorry. Give me one second, guys.
You're fine.
I'll go ahead and say, as a point of clarification, I can make any decision I want to, as long as my wife says it's okay.
Exactly.
It makes for a happier life.
Yeah, exactly, so, you know, I, I can make any decision and express any opinion I want, as long as it's approved first.
Larry got a little sign that says, happy wife, happy life, and has it hanging in our family room.
Well, and knowing Larry, knowing Larry, it's worked, so.
So far, so good.
Yeah, yeah.
I would hate to think women don't treat men fairly, but I also have to say, I think my eight-year-old son's already figured that out with his sister.
It, it's not about fairness, it's about just understanding how the world works. So.
Okay, now are you seeing the slideshow?
Yeah, it looks amazing.
Thanks, and all it took was Zach to save me from it, so that's good. All right, so item nine is a continuation from our public hearing meeting on October 15th about the MCCD Design Guidelines, a text amendment. I'm just going to jump into it, and you guys feel free to ask questions as we go, or bring up other points. What we've tried to do is, number one, address kind of, well, we've tried to address the, the questions that were brought up during the October 15th meeting, I went back and listened to it again, re-watched the video, and there were kind of identified at the end of that conversation were sort of four main questions or points. And the first one of them, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get to right away, and we'll just get that out of the way and then move on to the others. So the first one had to do with the mapping. So there was a question about, there was always a map contained in the design guidelines that had been adopted previously and that are still on the books. And there was also, and whether or not we should have a map in the, included in the design guidelines that we're proposing, we didn't include a map, and we still don't believe that we should for a couple of reasons. And they're outlined here pretty well. 1717020 before last year, about this time last year, used to define the boundaries of the MCCD zone in the way that you can see there struck out. We removed that from the zoning, because there's not another zone where you define the boundaries. The map, the zoning map defines or decides where that, clarifies where that zone is applied. And the map can be changed, and you don't want to have to change the text of the ordinance every time you change a property from a zone. For example, this, can you see the cursor? Are you seeing the right screen? No, you can't see the cursor? You can't see the different map. So now can you see the map and the? Okay, so I'm just going to do this in a different way. Now you can't see it, sorry. All right, so we struck the description, in the boundary description of the, of the zone that was in the coordinates previously last year, because of the changes that get, that get made. This property where the Transformation Center is located was in the MCCD zone. It was removed from the MCCD zone, and so the map changed. So the description that's in the design guidelines right now, the ones that are on the book, is wrong, because that wasn't modified when we changed the, the zone from, of this property, from MCCD to CD. It's not a good idea in general to have a map in your, in your zoning ordinance, that's not the zoning map. So we don't want one of the design guidelines either. If you have issues with that and take issue with that, let me know where, what I'm missing, but to me, it's a bad idea. So I'm still recommending that we not place a map in the design guidelines. Moving on from that. Moving on from that, I wanted to focus a little bit on the purpose statement. We, we, we mentioned that we wanted to talk about the purpose of the zone and, and how that relates to the design guidelines and how it informs them. So I'm just gonna read this, if that's all right. The Murray City Center District is envisioned as the commercial, civic and cultural center for the community and is intended to enhance physical, social and economic connections by redeveloping downtown Murray.
Jared, I don't mean to interrupt.
Yeah.
But I don't think your slide changed.
Okay. Now, is it changed now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So now, yeah, let me, I probably appreciate that. I thought I was seeing the wrong screen. I'm glad to know that's the case. So the purpose statement says those things that I said, "By redeveloping downtown Murray City resulting in a richer, more vibrant cultural environment, the 2017 Murray City General Plan suggests that the city center should include development which is pedestrian-oriented, with a strong emphasis on the urban design and streetscape. The regulations and design guidelines of the MCCD are intended to promote mixed-use development, encourage pedestrian-oriented design, promote development opportunities and increase residential and commercial densities. The anticipated development model promotes sustainable mixed-use transit-oriented uses with neighborhood-oriented commercial, restaurant, civic, cultural and residential spaces to promote street life and activity." Now, the purpose statement, all of the things, all of the principles and practices that we've included in the design guidelines support these statements. That's not to say that the existing design guidelines, or the, the design guidelines that we're proposing to repeal and then replace with these proposed, that they don't do this. They, they support these things too, but they support them in different ways, and I think it's important to note that. Also, if you remember, and I know it's kind of a, just a trip down memory lane, but the purpose statement in the previous version of the MCCD zone was two or three pages long and had listed a bunch of goals. Among them were things that, that were no longer really as heavily promoted in the, in the MCCD zone. Historic, historic preservation among them, and we're gonna talk about that more as we get through the, through the project. That brings me to a couple of other things that I wanted to, to bring out. The, the design guidelines themselves were called out in the previous MCCD zone in 1717020, that you can see at the top of the screen there. "City Council Adoption of City Center District Design Guidelines Conformance. The Murray City Council shall adopt Murray City Center District MCCD Design Guidelines. Property located within the MCCD shall be developed in conformance with the provisions set forth in this chapter and with the MCCD Guidelines." That language is significantly different from what's in the current adopted MCCD zone, 1717020, because we no longer needed O2O for the boundary description of the zone. "The Murray City Council has adopted the Murray City Center District MCCD Design Guidelines. The guidelines shall be consulted during the review of proposed development in order to provide guidance, direction and options which will further the stated purposes of the MCCD. Wherever practicable, development should adhere to the objectives and principles contained in the design guidelines." And now I'm reading these two not to bore you to tears, but to set up a conversation about how the, how the design guidelines are instructive and inform development applications in the MCCD zone. That was one of the other questions that came up was how, how are these even useful if they don't have any teeth in them, I think is the phrase that gets used, and I wanted to address that. And I can't address that appropriately without pointing out that it used to say "shall," it no longer does. But that doesn't mean that they don't inform development, and I'll, I'll get to how they do that in the next few slides. So Zach had a slide in the previous presentation, "What are Design Guidelines?", and it, it said their, their best practices, their, their principles, sound principles of urban design, et cetera. I, I took this statement, it's one that I found in looking at other things from Alameda County in, in California. "Design Guidelines are a set of discretionary statements and development standards are a set of threshold requirements. Both are intended to guide land development to achieve a desired level of quality for the physical environment." And I, I have that in here for you to bear in mind as you look at the next few slides. So, "Design Guidelines versus Development Standards" is what I want to talk about right now. We have development standards. They're contained in our MCCD code itself, in the ordinance itself. In this particular code, the design guidelines that Alameda County uses are in the same document as their development standards, but they are in fact distinct things. So this is just taken right from their design guidelines for residential mixed-use projects. That's one of their, one of their different design guideline sets. But I want you to notice a couple of things about it. This is just a few random pages from that document. This is one of their design guidelines, dealing with development intensity, with aspects or principles like design projects to enhance the visual appearance of the street and district in which they are located. That's a broad statement. There's no teeth in that, but it's part of the design guideline. And it informs with these pictures, these visuals, to try to help developers understand what they're trying to achieve in the zone. Another standard, another guideline in those sets, building relationships to the street, you'll recognize a lot of these same kinds of principles, local active uses on the ground floor, or sorry, locate active uses on the ground floor and provide continuous storefront windows. The same kind of thing that we're, we're talking about. Another auto circulation, side access and driveways. Many, many similarities to the kind of things that we're talking about in our design guidelines, and even just the formatting and sort of the, the, the depth of, of detail. Now compare that to development standards that are a different document within that code. This is their maximum densities table. We treat densities, and we have very specific allowances for how the densities work in mixed-use zones and in the MCCD zone, but it's not contained in the design guidelines. It's part of our development standards, which are part of the actual ordinance itself. This is a table that deals with their residential standards for how you site the building and their coverage, ground floor, commercial space requirements. Again, you're all aware, we have those kinds of requirements. They're just not in our design guidelines. They're in our development standards, which are part of our ordinance. These are just visuals from the same kinds of, that reinforce those same thresholds, those development standards. We have the same kinds of visuals in our, in our ordinance itself, but again, they don't really belong in the design guidelines. Same kind of thing here, with setbacks determined. We actually do allow this overhang of sidewalks as well. They've kind of visualized it there. This is, having that kind of as a background. This is, I took this slide directly from the slides that we used to present the MCCD changes that were proposed and adopted last year. When we did that, we were asked to, we recognized that the design guidelines would need to change if they were gonna get maintained. If we were gonna still have a design review committee and have design guidelines. So what we proposed was that we would simplify them, make them actual design guidelines instead of that weird sort of hybrid that we had been using. And as you look at those slides, and I know you've had a chance to look at the existing design guidelines, because we provided those as well, you can see that these kinds of things, these kinds of specific standards are in those existing design guidelines that we're trying to repeal and replace. We, we promoted the idea that we should simplify them, remove those kinds of development standards that didn't belong there, and have them in our code instead, which we do. And we promoted a simple, clear one-page design, supporting values that link back to the general plan and things like that. So this was the kind of sample that we used, and we ended up visually making it look very much like this. This was what we've been working towards all along, what we had told the council at the time in, in 2019 that we would do. So with that all in, in, in mind, again, we're, we're trying to support the general plans, goals and initiatives, and that's why with the key initiatives that we have, the city center district being the number one, I just want to read this. "Building on Murray's commercial district along State Street with existing cultural assets, this initiative is geared toward creating a core at the city's, sorry, a court district at the city's center. Throughout the public involvement process, people expressed a desire for cultural and social events within their own community. A city-centered district can be the social and economic heart of the city." We, using that kind of statement, and that statement appears over and over again in our notes from the, the workshops that were held, adopting the general plan, et cetera. We identified these values from those notes and from those, that survey that was done. And, and you're familiar with those from the previous presentation, "Authentic, active, inclusive, multimodal and connected." One of the other questions that was brought up had to do with process and how that works. And this relates back again to how the design guidelines are used in reviewing projects and how they do inform development or how they would inform development proposals. "All the major alterations in pre-construction in the previous code required pre-applications with the planning division staff, applications for, for designer, well, for what we called Certificate of Appropriateness approval, we now call it design review approval. And they require review and recommendations by the MCCD Design Review Committee and review and approval by the Planning Commission." None of that has changed. The design guidelines being simplified and being made more accessible is not, has no impact on that process. The process was left in place. One of our goals in, in simplifying and making the design guidelines easier to understand was to make them more accessible to developers as they're preparing to have a pre-application conference with us. The kind of design guidelines we have now that are really easy to, to look at and understand and get through would mean a lot more in terms of informing the concepts that people put together after they've had a pre-application with us as division staff. That's one of the goals we had for those new guidelines. That moves on to the standards of review that are contained in the ordinance, not in the design guidelines, but in the ordinance regarding the design guidelines. It says in the ordinance that the Planning Commission, in looking at design review approval, is to determine the following before they give that approval to a project. Number two, that the project is in general conformance with the specific area plan, if any, that's adopted for the area. That might, in, in the case of the MCCD, have to do with the Murray Central Station Small Area Plan in some projects. Number three, the project conforms to the requirements of the applicable sections of the land use ordinance, so the code itself, which we've talked about, the things that it contains, and can talk more about that if we need to. Number four, that the project does not jeopardize the health, safety or welfare of the public. And five, that the project is in harmony with the purpose of the MCCD zone and adheres to the principles of the design guidelines. So while the guidelines themselves may not contain specifics that require 10 feet from this, or 30 feet in this, or a step back at a certain level, et cetera, projects that get reviewed by you as the planning commission, we should be able as staff to tell you that these are the ways that they're adhering to the principles of the design guidelines. So they don't have specific teeth, but they do have some grip and can be used. The last couple of things I wanted to go over, and then we can, we can get into conversation about it more loosely. There was, there were questions about how these design guidelines didn't have any, didn't make mention of historic preservation as a principle. And that is, that is not accidental. The, the ordinance, and to, to explain that, I need to explain or remind you what happened with the ordinance last, last year. Historic preservation previously was a deterrent approach in the MCCD zone. And I, I won't go through all of these requirements, but they are the deterrent. The list of historically significant properties meant that you, in order to demolish or, or or make part, even partial demolitions of historically significant properties that were identified, you had to get a certificate of appropriateness that did the following things. And they were difficult to deal with, and they were not just difficult to deal with. They were statements that, that supported or didn't support them were ambiguous enough that they caused problems, and, and there was a, we, as a planning commission, passed or granted a certificate of appropriateness that then was overturned on appeal and in court, because there are such conflicting statements in the design guidelines and in the old code. Those have been removed. Along with that, these kinds of requirements that are deterrent approach to historic preservation have been removed as well. And that's, that is a, that is a asked and answered question. It was determined last year that these kinds of requirements that did historic preservation in the code were removed. So, as that, as that relates to the design guidelines, there's nothing in the design guidelines about historic preservation, because right now, in the code, in the MCCD ordinance itself, it's an incentive-based approach. It's not a big incentive, but it's what we, we got passed by the council to at least support people rather than deter them from removing buildings, support them in trying to keep them if they would. So we waive permit fees, we waive application fees, and those can amount to be significant amounts on big projects if people are renovating or keeping a historic building in the MCCD that's on that list of historic buildings. Otherwise, they can be removed from the list and, and none of the, the rules apply to them. And most of these rules have all been removed, any rate. So there isn't anything in the design guidelines about historic preservation, and there isn't really anything in our code anymore to tie design guidelines to. There's, there's no relevance anymore. That's why there's nothing about that. I don't know how to explain it any better than that. Sustainability was another question that was asked. There, there were extensive requirements for third-party certifications like LEED in the design guidelines that were really development standards previously. Those were removed from, they were also duplicated in the code itself. Those were removed from the ordinance. In the current section 1717080, that's sustainability in the MCCD ordinance right now, there are no third-party certifications required, although they are encouraged, and public buildings are supposed to comply with high-performance building standards. Our current two public buildings that have been approved do. And it does have language that states the city can provide incentives if people do look for and achieve third-party certifications, but you have to define those incentives through a development agreement, so it's, it's a little open. "The focus of sustainability in the code is on water conservation, stormwater management, energy efficiency and support of transit and active transportation." And it further, it ends its, its section by stating that "Sustainable development principles and goals are recommended as standards in the design guidelines." And again, those design guidelines are just enforced through the standards of review. So they were really designed to be a tool for us to use as we review projects to present to you as a commission. So the design guidelines themselves, I just drew a couple of snips from the sustainability guideline in the, in the proposed guidelines. These are the kinds of, of, of principles we're looking for for people to show us what they're doing. Can you show us that you're doing some of these things to, to promote sustainable development? Low-impact development, green infrastructure, different materials to use that are, that are better for the environment. Systems that reduce water use. These are all standards like it says in that code. So we're trying to call right back to that MCCD ordinance itself with these guidelines to support it. So that's my, that's my presentation to show you why we have proposed what we've proposed. We have not recommended or, or changed anything in these design guidelines that are in your packets tonight. The things that we were considering doing, we're adding the map, and other than that, we're, we're not prepared to recommend that anything else would be appropriate. To add language about historic preservation, we don't feel as appropriate, because the code has changed significantly regarding historic preservation. And sustainability is still treated. It's not third-party recommend, third-party requirements anymore for certifications. But there's still language supporting sustainability in both documents. So we, we still feel like they're a good, solid set of design guidelines that are accessible to the public. They should be accessible to designers. They can use them to inform their applications as they're working with us. And we can use them to review proposals as they come to you as a body and to the design review committee to make sure that we're, we're implementing the kinds of things that the citizens have told us over time they want to see happen in the downtown. If you have any questions for staff, I'm sure you do, so go for it.
Go ahead, Travis.
I'm actually good for right now.
I mean, I thought it was good reading. I, I think it's good. I, I like, I like what we're putting together, and I like the design guidelines and anything we can do to help downtown revitalize, and, you know, I'm, I think it looks great. So I, I don't have any questions, Maren, or Sue, or Lisa, or Ned, do you have any?
I just had one comment on the page that talks about guideline 11, meaningful light. And then the last line is use lighting to provide safety to pedestrians in parking areas.
Yeah.
And I, I wondered if we wanted to say, to provide, use lighting to provide safety to pedestrians in all areas, because sometimes I'm not in a parking lot, and it's dark when I'm walking down the sidewalk. And if, you know, to make the, make it friendly and walkable.
Yeah. Okay.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yes, I love lights in parking lots, but I also like them on the sidewalk, so I don't get scared at night in the dark.
Yeah.
Big chicken.
That's a great comment.
Especially when you're walking back to your new apartment in Bonneville?
Yes, exactly, Travis.
That would be a lovely walk for the evening. You've got to make sure that you have plenty of light.
Yeah, I just, you know, that's, that's a big thing for me, is just, you know, having good lighting at night, so that if you do find yourself out at night, say, walking from the ice house home, you, you've got good, well-lit sidewalks to get you from there, you know, to your apartment or, or your. from there, you know, to your apartment or, or your home.
Yeah, that's, that's a great comment. Sue, we can, that's easy language to add and it means a lot.
But I loved it. I thought you guys did such a great job, such a great job.
Anything else? You have to ask questions because my wife accuses me of using my words to beat people into submission. So.
I was trying to find the words to say just that because you didn't change anything. You just presented it so darn well. We don't have anything to say.
My wife, my wife would agree with you. She'll, she'll tell me to stop talking sometimes. So I'll, I'll be quiet and you guys talk about whatever you want.
Or keep talking. You make everything sound just fine.
See, for me, it was just you did a lot of colors and pictures. And so it was like, yeah, it's gotta be good.
Yeah, there you go. Well, and this is, I, I was, I was gonna say, you know, this is, and I didn't hit the point and say I'm gonna, I'm doing it now. You're forced to do it more. The, the development standards versus design guidelines was something we probably should have talked to you about when we first proposed this because it is, it is a distinction and we, we, we absolutely could have parsed this out differently. But if we were going to have the kind of development standards that are already in our code that talk about the, the public infrastructure that gets put in, and that's frankly the most important part to me anyway, as a planner. Public realm that's twelve, fifteen, twenty feet maybe where all of that activity is taking place, that's prescribed by the ordinance itself. I wouldn't leave that kind of thing up to design guidelines. I want the design guidelines to give people ideas about what to do in that space. I want my code to require them to, to provide it. And, but I don't want to dictate everything about it necessarily. I want there to be some freedom for the architects and the designers to make things more interesting. That is how you get a unique place that is, that feels natural, that feels authentic, that because Zach and I didn't design the whole thing and make it look like, you know, a Disneyland kind of experience, not to disparage Disneyland, sorry Zach, but, you know. How dare you? I want it to be Disney. I know.
Mr. Hall, I was trying to find the words to follow your wonderful presentation. I, I was gonna say, you know, I recognize that not much had changed from our last report, but it sounds so much better and so perfect right now. And I was gonna say something along the lines that you know much more about planning than I, and I have faith in you. I just hope the outcome is as beautiful as the way you describe it.
Well, we all, we all do that. And that's the, the difference is we, we, we should have really kind of parsed out and explained the difference between the development standards that are in the ordinance. And, and some people don't do it that way. Your ordinance could be two pages long and you have a set of design guidelines and a set of development standards. We've not gone that way. We have more development standards in the code itself and then just these design guidelines separately. So we did have, we did have a, a public hearing last time. If you wanted to, and I think we opened and closed that, but we continued the item to now. If you wanted to open a public comment portion again, Scott, that would be fine.
Sure. Sure. Let's, I mean, let's open it up for public comment.
We don't have anybody registered to, to speak and we didn't get any previous emails, but we did get an email just now from Kim Anderson. And I'll just read it for you and then we can talk about it. What has happened to the requirement for a base of limited height? I think three or four stories at the Walk State Street, which allows the older buildings on State Street not to be overshadowed or smothered by the new buildings. So the, there was a step back requirement at the third story in the code up to last year in 2019, when we adopted the new MCCD zone. That was removed, the, the required step back at the third story because so many buildings are, this, the city center district stuff in the, in the, sorry, in the, in the general plan calls for this to be a low to mid-rise area. We're not looking at twenty-four-story buildings or anything like that. We, we capped the height at ten stories. Step backs are not a bad idea in lots of buildings, but we didn't want to dictate it in the code because so many buildings wind up being five stories, four or five floors over the podium of, of commercial use on the ground floor. And the step back seemed restrictive unnecessarily because so many, just with construction costs and the market forces are dictating about five-story buildings. We're gonna see some heights greater than that and we might see some step backs, but we didn't want to require it in those standards. So that's the answer I would give to that question.
Nothing else?
Nothing else coming in, no.
All right, Jared, so I'm still not getting it. I think, I think the design guidelines are still there. They tell, tell the developers, give them more guidance. I mean, I mean, it's not mandatory. None of the stuff in there is you will do this. I mean, we talked about LED. Says we want to try to do it. It didn't say you have to do it. And I think it's still, it's easier to read and find things that we, we would like to see happen in the MCCD versus the ordinance. I mean, I, I've gone through the ordinance a couple of times and I can't find crap in there. So I, I don't know. I'm, I'm still looking at the, the design guidelines, guidance as being something that you can pick up and you can actually find. Okay, so what's the city kind of looking for in this area, that area? I can't find it in the ordinance and it's certainly not in the new design guidelines. So I'm, I'm not, I'm not getting it, guys. Sorry. I don't. But I've been listening and I've been doing a lot of reading the last two weeks. And I'm, I haven't been able to convince myself as, as I have actually tried.
Sure. And I think I would, I'd probably start by saying it's, some of it, I think, Ned, is a function of, of the fact that they, they are very different. There's nothing inherently wrong with the design guidelines that we had. It's just that, that the direction was that they were, and, and there was some confusion, confusion. There was some disagreement about how, how much they had to be applied. They shall be, because people would use that language, they shall be adhered to, et cetera. And then no matter how much the, the language in the design guidelines themselves said, well, think about this or try this, or we'd like you to do this. It was being viewed by some people as, it says you gotta do them. So everything in there is a rule. Everything is LEED, LID practices on every single project. You have no, no flexibility at all and it's, it's making it too restrictive for development and that's not what we want. So whether that's right or wrong, I can't really say. But that was the view when the, when this, when, when the rewrite was set in motion. And what we tried to do as staff, if I'm being a hundred percent honest, was salvage everything that we could instead of having the zone go away in, in favor of, of other zones or other things entirely. The initial, the initial recommendations were for the DRC, the, the Designer Review Committee, to not, to not exist anymore, to be disbanded. We, we wanted to see that remain, the planning, when I say we, I mean the Planning Commission. Planning Commission's recommendation was to keep it and the City Council ultimately agreed and said we should keep the Designer Review Committee and we should keep design guidelines. However, there, there's too much confusion about how they get applied and how that works. So they need to be rewritten and you need to make them simpler, one-page, easy to read, easy, easy to access the ideas. Now, there's not gonna be anything in them, Ned, that, that says, there's not gonna be the detail in them that, that, that was in the previous design guidelines, like you said, and that's true. But I don't know that I agree that that makes them harder to read. It may make it harder for you to find a specific box you've got to check and say, well, I ought to do, they, they want me to do this. There's not gonna be that clarity. There's gonna be suggestions that we want you to look at ways to implement LID, for example, in many different ways. Or maybe you can choose different paving materials or whatever. There's just gonna be suggestions as opposed to specific items that you could check off. But that's what they wanted us to write. So that's what I tasked Zach with over the summer and he's put a good portion of his blood, sweat, and tears into it. But that's, I think that's what it's for. And I know it's hard to find stuff in the, in the ordinance itself too. It's, it's not easy to find everything that you want there, but yeah, we, we view the design guidelines as we've proposed them as just a kind of a, almost like a comparator, a measuring stick to look at proposals that come in. And people come in all the time and tell us, ask us, well, what is, what, what are you guys looking for? What's your commission looking for in a project? What kind of things, what kind of projects do you want to see downtown? And we want to be able to say, we could with the old ones too, but we wanted to be able to say with these design guidelines, we're looking for projects that will kind of respond to these kinds of issues that will look at how the building is related to the street in these five or six different ways. And you don't have to check them all off as boxes and do all five of them, but show us how you're gonna do that at least. And anything that's super important or really important and overridingly important, like visibility into the ground floor as a principle has been written into code itself instead. And that was doubled up on in the old version. In the old version, it was written as a requirement in the design guidelines and it was written into requirements in the code as well. Now it's just a requirement in code and design guidelines are gonna reference that kind of activity. That's kind of the difference. I don't know if that answers your question at all, but I, I hear where you're coming from and I think that's the reason. It's been, some of this stuff has been removed.
I can add to that, Jared. A lot of the changes were made on the heels of the City Hall project coming through this process. And the, I think the feedback with our own entity putting ourselves through our own process was that the elected officials, the executive side of the city felt like it was too restrictive. It was imposing too many mandates and really took away a lot of flexibility that the architects and designers had to design projects that they feel like would work. And so we were given the direction really essentially with the rewrite and then ultimately the rewrite of the code and ultimately the design guidelines, we were given the actually deregulate. And so with that context in mind, you know, that's, that's one reason why the ordinance we initially proposed to you last fall didn't include the Design Review Committee. Jared mentioned that ultimately the Design Review Committee lives on, but part of the trade-off of having that live on was to try and scale down and simplify those guidelines so that there wasn't a hundred and twenty pages of guidelines and specifications for people to sort through. It was left more open and flexible for those who are coming through the process designing buildings and, and planning their sites.
Hey, hey, Jared and Melinda. I have, I have to imagine I represent some percentage. It might be a small percentage, but some percentage of Murray that feels like me, well, I hear discussions like this that, um, it just makes me bite my nails and be a little bit nervous that we set, it sounds to me like we set high bars and expectations and now we're coming back and saying, you know what? We really, that's not us. We can't afford that or we can't really do that. And I don't plan cities, so I'm gonna respect what you guys are saying and learn from you. But I still, I feel like it's a little bit nail-biter because whatever we do downtown is gonna be what Murray is for the next hundred years. Is that big box store or empty buildings or active downtown like Sugar House? So I, I just say, I'm just saying, it makes me a little nervous when we say, in retrospect, we can't do all that. Kind of cringe a little bit, but it might just be the reality. So make good choices for us. Lead us in the right direction.
I do have, I appreciate that, Lisa. Thank you. I, I do have a comment that we didn't, we didn't close the public comment period while we were talking. And I did have an email come in. Do you want me to read that?
Yeah, that's why we let it open for a long time.
Okay, then I will read this. This is from Kim Anderson. He made the first comment that I read. This is another, he says, here I try again. Planning Commission, the following is written for the RDA meeting Tuesday regarding the RDA property at forty-eight hundred South and State. West Side, no much can be used here. See mostly the portion bold below and further below in bold. I'll forward this to you as well. The lack of historic requirements is the problem now. We will be, and this is in bold. We will now be just like any other city in Utah. Nothing to do with Murray, its nature, its look, or its feel. As I say below, we can now market Murray as just like Riverton, boring, same old, same old. The guidelines are more a copy of Portland, Oregon, not Murray or Utah. I've spent some time reviewing, and this is what he was mentioning, he had sent for the RDA comment. I've spent some time reviewing the proposed development plans for the west side of State Street that will be before the RDA today. I've also driven the area. Again, I understand that the city wants to get something going in this area of the city. The public wants something done, but we want it done right. My first thought is that it is smart for the mayor to bring this to the council during the pandemic when there will be little input. I hope I'm wrong. Second, I find the most interesting part of the proposal are the existing buildings that are to remain. There's nothing of interest in the proposed new buildings now that they are, now that they are bad, but they do not fit the city or what had been a historic area. There is no historic nature to the buildings, I guess, unless we're looking two hundred years in the future when they will be historic nature. Oh, I forget, we designed buildings now for forty years, not for the long term. As I suggested to Marison our years ago, when he was pushing changes for the historic district, we could advertise our new downtown as just like Riverton, same old, same old. Also, if I remember correctly, old building, all buildings are to have a base of not more than three stories of the sidewalk. What happened to that? Did that get changed? I think I addressed that. It, it was removed. If not, this plan does not meet current ordinances and should not be changed to allow it. Looking over the city code seventeen one seventy-one twenty does not show this requirement. When did that change or did it change last November twenty nineteen? There seems to be, there seem to be few materials that are of a, of an historic nature. Excuse me, the design of the Gibson that was built by Zwick Construction has more interest than what is being proposed for this project, but still no Murray connection unless you connect to the new hotels on fifty-three hundred south. Very little interest at all in either for our downtown. Holiday City has a nice downtown. Now that I want this area to look like Holiday, but at least Holiday City required to design to be of interest with a historic look. I guess the new buildings will match the new city offices and that is not a compliment. The city offices should be on State Street. What an error by the city not to have it on State Street. I know that is history now. But again, Mr. Anderson. Okay.
Thank you.
I think we've responded to most of that already, so.
Well, then I guess we can, go ahead, Travis.
I, I think people think there was a lot more thought that went into constructing these buildings a hundred years ago than actually went into it. They were just slamming up buildings. They needed a building. They didn't have this criteria to be considered. Putting a standard in place. We're at least considering, how will this building work now? And forty years, fifty years, a hundred years from now? That consideration just simply didn't take place a hundred years ago. It was, I had a piece of property. I gotta fit a building here. We build the building. Those buildings weren't built to last. We're not talking about architecturally significant buildings like you see in the downtown core that were built in, in Salt Lake City on Main Street. It's not the same kind of construction that took place. So to just act like we're throwing history aside, history probably wasn't as remarkable as people like to think it was at the time. And I don't know that people are gonna agree with my opinion on this, but I, I think it's a hard truth that you would need to at least step back and consider somewhat.
It's, it's a good thought. It's, it's, it's crossed my mind before too. So I would tend to agree with you.
Yeah, I think that's a really good thought. And you know, as I've been reading through the design guidelines and, and looking through everything, I thought, you know, not every town can have an identity like Jackson Hole. It just doesn't, you know, it's just not practical. You know, yes, it would be fun to, you know, to have this remarkable design, but it's just not practical. You know, like I say, every, you know, every town can't be Jackson Hole or Park City. It just, it just doesn't work that way.
Yeah, and that was kind of, I guess, my thought too, as I review these guidelines is I think they're good principles that allow us to at least achieve what we want to do, which is a more walkable, usable downtown. I, I kind of agree with Travis. I think some of the buildings on there that, there's a difference between old and historic. And, and I think a lot of them are old and they may have sentimental attachment to people. You know, and they, and that, and then to them that becomes important, but I think, you know, we, we need guidelines that allow us to create what we want in the future, which is a walkable, usable downtown. I mean, that's what we want to create. And so how, how do we do that? Do we do that by, I mean, I think we do it by learning from the past, looking at the buildings that we've had in the past and what we liked and what we didn't like, and, and creating guidelines that allow us to learn from the past, but also kind of go the direction we want to in the future. So I, I like the design guidelines. I mean, I'm not a planner and I mean, I'm not a planner and I'm not as dialed in as, as some of the other, you know, members on this professionally. But I, I think I like what it, what it's offering. I like some of the examples and the pictures that have been shown. So I, I think it's a really good start.
Yeah, I, I can agree, agree. There's a difference between old and historic, but I'm not arguing that. But I think some, that's one concern that residents have stated. But another concern is making sure that we're making decisions that are best for long term and not just the decision that brings in somebody, they'll build something there. Because you can build ugly things in the wrong place. So we're trying to make all those right decisions at once, save what's worth saving, also build something that's worth having. I'm not the expert there.
You know, it's, and it's funny, and I would just, I'll just give you my thoughts and sentiments for a minute. Like Scott just said, I'm not a planner. That's not true. You're a nine-year planning commissioner. You're a citizen planner. All of you are. And you do a great job of reviewing these items and, and taking, making sure we're on track as your, as your professional staff and questioning us when we need to be questioned and making sure we tell the lines and, and provide you the information that you need. So you absolutely are planners. You're citizen planners at the very least.
And to that, Jared, I, I will bring this up, what I brought up when we first brought in the, when the city hall was, you know, Lisa brought it up earlier. And, and I brought it up in the meeting that I didn't like how we went about it, that we had these standards and then we go to build the city hall and, and then we want to change the standards. So I, my, my hope and my thought all along is that we're not changing these things just so it benefited us as a city. But that we really do feel based on, on research and in professional and looking at what's out there, talking to other cities, that we really do feel that we make these changes because it'll allow us to create the development that we need. Because, I mean, I, I've lived in the city for 20 years and State Street hasn't changed a lot beyond, you know, that 53rd and Costco and those areas, but there's still, still a lot of areas that hasn't changed. And, and, and so it's like, we need to create some things. So if the design helps us to create a more usable, walkable downtown, I'm all for it.
And I think this will do that. That's our, that's our recommendation.
But if it takes us a little longer to do that than we're comfortable with, I'd rather take it longer and get the right thing than hurry and get the wrong thing. So it's a delicate balance.
It is. It is.
But I, I think it's really important to focus on what Jared talked about a little earlier, where it's not his role as a planner to decide what the building looks like. It's, it's his role to decide how that urban environment works for the individual in that 10 or 12 feet of space that we occupy. And I think that the guidelines really do help inform what we should be considering. And, and, and that is built off of looking at places that are historic, looking at places that, that weren't built for the automobile, but were built for the pedestrian. And, and I think that a lot of the principles that are proposed in, in, in the guidelines really do reflect that. And, and we really are looking at how, how the, the citizen is going to interact with whatever is built there, how we're going to interact with that space and the public space.
Yeah, I, I agree. I was, I was actually in downtown Cincinnati yesterday and there's a street there that is doing exactly, you know, that's very walkable and it's right by the ballpark and by hotels and convention centers. And I just thought, this is the kind of stuff, there, there's some places that aren't quite as nice. And I thought that we need to create in, in, you know, in Murray, we need to have places that people can walk and there's attractions that bring people there. And there's, you know, the bars and the restaurants and it just creates this lively downtown. So when I read what the goals are, I thought, this is, this is exactly what we want downtown. You know, we want, we want these things. We want walkability, activity, sustainability. I mean, those are the things that we want. And so I, I think it's great.
So I want to clarify my earlier comments and, and just make sure that they're not misconstrued. But I think, I think having the city go through that process itself and two times, right? Because we did the fire station and then the city hall. I don't think it was necessarily a reflection of, this is hard. We want different standards for ourselves and we want to lower the standards. I think it was, we came away with a sensitivity to how confining the process was and, and how frustrated architects and designers were by not being able to have the flexibility that they wanted to design the projects that they felt like would work for them. And also I think we came away with an understanding of, of how difficult the process can be for those who come through it. And, and not only that, but there was a change in the sustainability standards. And I think that was a reflection where the city came back and said, you know, this is a very high standard and there's comparable standards out there that can still meet the sustainability, but not have the same price tag associated with it. And, and so in the end, I think really what the city did was we came away with an experience that cities don't often have the opportunity to have because we don't build buildings very frequently. We don't put ourselves through our own process, except for on occasion. And, and having to go through that process a couple of times in a row, I think really was the precursor for why the powers that be wanted to streamline and simplify.
Hey, Melinda, thank you for that. And a question for you. Do you know, even just anecdotally, how many or, you know, applications would come through and look at the old guidelines? And, and just say, oh, this is just, it's too much or it's cost prohibitive or, I mean, because it's clear we didn't have a lot of development. We didn't have a lot of projects. So I'm just wondering is that if that was the city's experience, do, do we feel like that, that that restrictions or the experience the city had has turned away buildings or projects before?
So, I mean, that's a, that's a tough question for me to answer because I've only been here for two years. But my, my thoughts would be that it was, it was more the ordinance requirements than the design guidelines. In the past, there has been a very strong presence laid on the historic preservation. And I think that really limited opportunities and limited development. Historic preservation is a tough subject because, because there are people that are very passionate about it and there are people who are not at all passionate about it. But, you know, when you look at what's best for the community as a whole and why redevelopment areas and project areas are created, what we came away with was that the, the ordinance really wasn't written to, to promulgate the goals of a redevelopment project area. It, it was there to preserve history and that's fine and well in areas that's, that those are kind of low hanging fruit opportunities of preserving those, those buildings. But I think, I think for Murray anyway, a lot of those low hanging fruit opportunities of preserving buildings really left a long, long time ago, even, even, you know, 30, 40, 50 years ago. And so at, at any rate, it's tough for me to answer. But I think, I think the more limiting thing really was, was the ordinance. And, and, and timing as well. You know, it takes, it takes time for redevelopment properties to be prime. And some of that is just the luck of the draw when, you know, when the market is right, when getting financing for projects is right. And there's always going to be opinions that differ from, from the direction that we've chosen to go with what changes the council approved last year and then the design guidelines that are before you. But, but I think we've made a step towards progress in that we're, we're closer than we've been, I think, in many ways to having the goals of the redevelopment area of the central business district be realized. When, I think it was 2016, maybe, might've been 2015. But when the old ordinance was in place and the city did a, or the R D A did an R F P for development on the property at 48th and State, we received two, two proposals. The city went ahead and, and negotiated with, with one firm for a number of years and nothing came of that. We opened up a proposal in the middle of a pandemic and came away with five proposals. And so I think, to me, I think that, I, I can't directly tie the changes in the ordinance to the fact that we received two and a half times as many proposals, five versus two than we did several years ago. But I think, I think the vision that the new ordinance and the guidelines and the direction that they're going is the one to, to bring the development in that will accomplish the goals of, of the central business district redevelopment area.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Okay.
I don't think we ever closed the public hearing part of it, if you want to do that. We haven't got anything else.
We'll, we'll close it. It's been open for like a half hour. So, so we will close the public portion, the public hearing. And any more discussion or the process, I mean, obviously Jared, there's, you didn't ask for a motion in this or unless I missed it. Oh, we did. I just didn't see it on my.
I wrote, I wrote a request for a motion. I just didn't verbalize one.
Okay.
I'll ask you for it.
So, so I guess that, the, the question is, is, you know, are there any other questions or discussion from the council? From the commission here or someone want to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion that we approve the city council. We make, sorry, let me start over. That the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council to repeal and replace the Murray City Center District Design Guidelines as proposed.
I'll second her motion.
Second, okay.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Patterson to forward a recommendation to the Center District Design Guidelines as proposed and a second by Commissioner Nay. Jared?
Okay.
You're on mute.
I got it. Ms. Patterson? Mr. Nay?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Hacker?
No.
Ms. Milkovich?
Yes.
And Mr. Woodbury?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Anything else from staff?
Um, not unless you have questions about things specifically. I believe Zach forwarded the agenda coming up for the 12th or for the 3rd of December. Is that right?
Yes.
So lots of, lots of interesting things. So I know some of those are surprises, probably. We're a little, we're a little, not caught off guard is the wrong moment. We, with the wrong word. But we, we expect things to move a little slower than they do sometimes. And every once in a while developers and property owners will surprise you. And yeah, we, we've got a few surprises this last couple of months. It's almost like that October surprise for politics, but it was land use October surprises. So here we are. But we'll, we'll be writing reports on those this week and getting them started. The packets are going to have to come out on Wednesday before Thanksgiving because it's the holiday next week. So we have a very limited window to write reports on them. And again, I'll just reiterate what I've said a billion times. If you have questions about anything in those packets or reports when they come out, feel free to call us. We're available anytime. So call us, ask questions if you have them and we'll try to talk, talk you through them. But yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Jared. So I will, I guess.
I have one. Scott, I have one more thing. So last meeting I announced and last week I sent the council and the staff invitation that you probably had already received to our workshop on Monday, four to five. So if you're available and want to get some updates on processes that the W F R C goes through for planning and, and visioning, it's only two hours of your Zoom time.
I'll be there, Ned.
I don't have a speaking part, so. Anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Ned, if you don't have a speaking for, spark, then I'm not going. Anyway, well, I guess I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second?
I can.
Second by Lisa. All right. Thank you. Great job. Everyone have a wonderful Thanksgiving and we'll see y'all in a couple of weeks.
Thank you all very, very much. You do such a good job.
Good job, Jared. Good job, staff.